From 365 Luke's Wood Road.
Okay, you'll remind me as we go.
Okay, so do you want me to call the roll?
Yes, please.
Okay, Laura Edmonds.
Here. Present.
John Mahoney. John, are you, I'm sorry, did I like lock you down? Sorry, can you speak now?
You've given me the loop treatment, Mahoney is here.
Are you here or here?
I am here.
Okay. Jessica Cardon. Did I have you on, I'm sorry, I muted you too.
I think we muted ourselves for the handler call. But yeah, I'm here, this Cardon's here.
Ben Bielis.
Here.
Luke Toshian.
Present.
Richard Carratou.
Here.
Becky Walsh, there you are.
Here.
And then Cynthia Doll.
I'm here.
Okay, perfect. And then the first one is 20 East Maple, I'm gonna unmute the Leahy's, should be Mimi, and Steve.
Steve, yeah.
Steve, you're unmuted.
Okay.
Okay.
And Patrick and Mimi, you are unmuted.
Okay, great, thank you. Should I start?
Yep, please.
Okay, so.
Laura, do you want to read the, do you want to read the description?
Well, we, let's, we'll call the meeting to order, the zoning board of appeals for the town of New Canaan will come to order on May 4th, 2020. How this will work was we will call your case. Please be sure when you speak that you identify yourselves, we are being recorded. We'll give everyone a chance to present and then those that are with us in favor of the variance will have a chance to speak. Those who are against the variance will have an opportunity to speak. The board will then go into, actually, and then the presenters will have a chance to once again reiterate their case. Then the board will go into a business session and then the board will vote on the variance. You'll need five positive votes in order to obtain a variance. So we'll start with, any questions about that?
No.
Okay, we'll start with 20 East Maple.
Okay, hi.
Hi.
So I did put together a brief presentation, I don't know if you guys have that or if it's gonna go.
Do you want me to share it and you could go through it right now?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Just so everyone's on the same page.
Wait one second. Hold on one second, wait. I got the wrong one up, hold on one second. Because there's so much this time, there's so many windows that are open, hold on one second. There you go.
Great. So.
Not seeing it.
Do you see it?
Yeah, it's still, no, it's on the, it's still on the file management section. We can see the files, but it hasn't opened.
It hasn't opened, where? Do I not?
Click on it, it looks like it has to be clicked on.
Oh, okay, one second. It's open. Hold on one second, because it's.
If it doesn't work, I can just talk it out too.
No, give me a second, because there were so many, there were so many presentations. You guys can't see it at all?
No.
We have 26 people.
Let me see if I can share the screen one more time.
Lynn, why don't we let her go, let the folks?
Okay, go for it.
Okay, so it's not on the screen, but what we did in our presentation, we just grabbed each section of the code that we're requesting a variance for. So the first one was that we're requesting an increase in the building coverage, 379 square feet overall level, due to our unusually small lot size in the neighborhood. So our property is Maple, it's one of the smallest single-family lot sizes in New Canaan, even though the neighborhood does have small lot sizes. And it's 0.175 an acre, or 7,621 square feet. So the allowable building coverage is only 1,896 square feet. And what we're proposing is to increase our home's coverage to 275 square feet, which 250 square feet for our front rear porch entry. So our proposed increase is still less than what the previous owner had requested in 2001, they had requested an expansion of the home, but they never carried it out. Though, I believe they requested 2,388 square feet, but they never actually did that renovation. So on, let me see, I guess, in the presentation, I did have a picture of the, our house next to the neighbors, I don't know if you can see it, anyways, it's very.
Can you see it?
Oh, there it is, there it is.
Now we can.
I can see it now. Right, so there's the picture, and our house is the little greenhouse in between the white house on the left and the yellow house on the right. So as you can see, it is actually quite, quite a bit smaller than the white house, which is a two-family, two-family dwelling, and then also smaller than the house on the left, the yellow house. Okay, so the next page is, shows a Google map satellite image, and you can see, again, the, you know, our house is the one with the little red dot on it, so it's much smaller than the house definitely to the left. But you can also see the other problem with our, not problem, but the other challenge with our property is that the lines, the lines were drawn after our house was built. And so our house doesn't sit centered on the property, it's sort of like a little tilted, which creates some issues with, with non-conformity, just pre-existing non-conformity. So we're also requesting to increase the maximum side yard height to 21 feet at mid roof. Because, because our size, our lot size is really unusually small, it doesn't meet the D residence zone minimum front yard width of 75 feet. And because it doesn't sit centered in the building setback line, this also creates a problem, and again, it's probably because the property lines were drawn after the land was subdivided, or after the house was built in 1910, and then land was subdivided. So no matter what we do with our, really, basically, no matter what we do, our, our lot's frontage is undersized, any increase in building height is non-conforming. So right now, our second story is only like, it's only partially, it has a lot of downward slipping roof, and we're only hoping to, oh yeah, sorry, just back to.
What, go back one more?
Go back, you still have to, right here, right there, yeah, to the writing. If you go down to the writing part underneath the photo.
Just, oh, sorry.
Yes, that's, yeah, that's what I'm talking to you right now, so. The, we're only hoping to get reasonably sized bedrooms upstairs, and it raises the roof as shown in our plans, which are not on this presentation. But we've kept the ridge of the roof running back, front to back, so that the eaves of the house are down, and the interior, the house's interior ceiling heights are all standard, there's nothing really, really high or anything, it's just, and total building height requirement isn't a problem, it's only that because we don't have the minimum frontage, we can't meet the side height requirement. Okay, and then the next page, page three, addresses our request to raise, so this picture is the back of our house, and that triangle outlined in red is current portion of the house that is non-conforming because it sits outside the setback lines that were drawn after the house was built. So this shows that, what we want to do, that part of the, that's non-conforming, what we're trying to do is just raise it a little over a foot, so right now, that shows where it will be, but it currently sits about a foot lower. And the reason we want to do that is because inside the house, the ceiling heights are different, so in the kitchen, the ceiling heights are different, in order to even it out and make the room more harmonious, we just want to raise the roof so that it's sitting inside, it can be one height. And we feel like this is something that doesn't impact our neighbors really at all. It's just that it's on the part of our house that is, has a pre-existing non-conforming, non-conformity. So those are the three sections of the zoning regulations that we needed to address. The last point is just that we have, we've been living in this neighborhood for a while, and we have consulted with our neighbors, we have sent in, sent in the required letters to all our neighbors, and all of our adjacent neighbors, that, so the neighbors to the left, and the neighbors to the right, and the neighbors across the street have all sent in letters of support. So I guess we are requesting that these variance be approved because of our lot's unique small size, and because of how, the pre-existing house is situated within the confines of the building. And we feel that these conditions are not common to other properties in our neighborhood, and creates a potential hardship for us. And we don't believe that these will adversely affect the character or enjoyment of any of our neighbors' properties in the neighborhood itself. That was the presentation, I don't know if you have any specific questions you want us to address? Or anything else you need to clean?
I have a question about the triangle on the back of the house.
State your name, and before you do it, Mimi and Patrick, can you just state your names?
I'm Mimi Leahy, and this is my husband Patrick Leahy.
Hi, Ben Bielis, my question is about the figure of the triangle, the red front, is that a slant because the rear setback slices through?
Yeah, it's like, yeah, it slices through that angle because our house doesn't sit square on the property, it's like, it sits kind of like, if you look at the Google map, it's like, kind of, it's not.
It's off kilter.
It's off kilter, right.
Right, so when you, so when you add a second floor, you'll have more.
No, we're actually not adding a second floor, all we're trying to do is that first floor part of the roof, the first floor part of the roof, we're just trying to raise it one foot, so that the inside, the kitchen ceiling will be one height.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I got you.
John, go ahead, John.
Thank you, John Mahoney. Question on the side yard, the height setback, is that, are we really only, it's a one-foot issue there by, caused by your raising that roof, or is, do we have a step-down issue as well?
So I'm gonna let our architect address that, Steve, because he can probably better speak to that, the one foot that I mentioned was actually for the back portion that's non-conforming, that little back corner of our house, it's just that first floor roof that's being raised one foot.
So that's the height one, is that, so that was the height area?
That's number three, that's the request to raise the rear single-story roof on the pre-existing non-conforming corner of our house. And then, issue number two is the roof, so the roof on the side, it's not the, it's not the overall height of our roof that's a problem, that is gonna be, it's gonna be lower than our neighbors, like, the top part of the roof will be lower than our neighbors, it's the side, the eaves of our roof, because we have less frontage in the front, does that make sense, so there's the roof, the eaves are, won't be, they're out of, how do you say, non-conforming because the frontage of the house is non-conforming, so we don't have enough setback. But I'll let, I'll let our architect discuss that, because he can better speak to it.
Steve? Is it Steve?
This is Steve Osley, Steve Osley speaking. Like Mimi said, the overall width of the lot is narrow and doesn't meet the minimum requirement for the zone. There's just parts of the outside eaves of the roof that can't meet that, the ratio that is required to the side yard setbacks because of the narrowness of the lot. And what we've tried to do is keep the sides, the left and right side eaves as low as possible, with the standard roof, I'm sorry, standard ceiling height on the second floor to, you know, to try to keep everything down as much as possible. And, you know, so that, we had to, we had to put that in for the request, because we just, there's nothing we can do to meet that minimum side yard mid-level requirement, mid-roof requirement, because of the narrowness of the lot.
This is John Mahoney again, just a follow-up question, looking at the aerial, it looks like that may be an existing condition, are you, are you making it any worse, or is it just, because of the changes, you have to come for a variance for that as well?
Well, it's primarily just because we're changing stuff that's already, is, is a fairly part of it that's gonna be increasing the non-conformity, but it's very minimal. And again, it's because the house is skewed, I think that if the house wasn't skewed and we had a few more feet on the width of the lot, we'd be okay.
Luke, did you have a question, Luke? Lynn, Luke?
Yeah, he's unmuted, Luke, can you speak?
Here, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So I'm confused, and I think my microphone goes out when I switch back and forth to the town website for some reason. The, this is, East Maple Street, right, 20 East Maple Street?
Yeah.
Yes.
All the materials online are talking about a special permit application.
We just, they have to go for a special permit also, because they fall under 7.1B2, I think it is, or 3, they're in a B-zone, and because they want to expand, if they're successful with getting the dimensional variance from the ZBA, they have to go to the P&amp;Z Commission for a special permit. If you recall, David Rucci had a similar case with 23 Lockwood, so.
This is Ben, Lynn, why, why do we come first?
Because of that you guys have to opine on the dimensional variance, and it's setback, and if they're successful here, then they go to P&amp;Z.
And get a special permit just because they're in the B-zone?
Because they're in the B-zone and they're expanding a non-conforming use, because that's what was written into the regulation, and it's a little quirk, and it only affects those in the B-zone.
Right, right.
I don't see the application online, though, then.
It's under ZBA, the P&amp;Z stuff would be under, under pending ZBA, is where you should see it.
Maybe it brought me to the wrong page, okay.
Yeah, it's there, Luke.
Okay.
I know it's there, because I'm referencing it on my other computer right now.
Okay, I'll try to find it.
Could you talk about what you're going to do with the extra allowable coverage, with the extra coverage?
Of course, so it is a unusually small house, so what we're going to do is, we're gonna go out the front of the house, and so the two parts, so there's a front of the house that we're gonna add, and then there's a little back patio right now that we're just gonna cover over to, again, square out our kitchen in the back, so that it is a larger kitchen, a more usable kitchen, with a dining area right next to it, because there's no separate dining area in this house, and because it's small, it can't, there can't be another separate dining area. And then in the front of the house, and then also, right next to that will become a mudroom entry, because again, this house has no garage, so, because it has no garage, the entryway becomes sort of critical, because there's no place to put anything. And then the front of the house will then become the living room area, or the family room area.
And, and part of the front expansion is to increase the size, there's a master bedroom on the first floor, so it's just to increase the size to make it more of a normal size, it's very small right now.
Becky, did you have a question?
Oh, wait, let me, I'm, sorry, Becky.
That's okay, I muted myself because my phone was ringing, so I guess for all the board participants, if you mute yourself, you can't unmute yourself, Lynn will have to do that for you, just, I think that's how it works.
Good to know.
But the question I had was more what Laura asked about where the extra coverage, what was that gonna be comprised of, so you answer that question.
Yeah, it's sort of just a rearrangement, and just tweaking each, just a little bit bigger so that they're more usable than they are now, and creating a space where things can land, because there is no garage in this house, and there's no way to put a garage on the house.
Luke?
Can't hear you, Luke.
Luke?
You there?
Yeah.
When you go to the ZBA, click the link for pending applications, it brings you to the P&amp;Z applications, the ZBA applications aren't there.
Oh, I just, I'm there right now.
Yeah, so am I.
I just clicked on it, on the, it's, you know, in blue when it says pending applications on the ZBA page.
Try linking from the main page of Town Hall, when you go to newcanaan.info.
Okay.
Go down to calendar, go click on the ZBA meeting, and it'll bring up a second dialogue box, which will have application presentations in it, and click on that link, that should bring you straight there.
Well, the link on our webpage is bringing us, bring me to P&amp;Z, so that has, that should get fixed.
Yeah, didn't do that for me.
No, me either, so there's something you're not doing right. When you go, it's the calendar master, which gives you the Zoom connection link, it's also right there, it says application, presentation, documents, and planner's memo.
I know, I'm saying from the ZBA homepage, where it's.
No, no, don't go there, go to newcanaan.info, and go to the calendar.
I understand what you're saying, Ben, but what I'm saying is our webpage, if someone goes to our webpage, and they click on our webpage, it says pending applications, and the applications are listing there, it all goes to P&amp;Z applications.
Mine doesn't, when I click on pending ZBA, it brings me right.
This is Jessica Cardon, I have the same problem as Luke.
Did you?
Yeah, I actually had to ask Lola for a separate link.
Oh, okay.
That's a glitch.
Okay. But you should be able to go up on the main page, if you click under calendar, the ZBA meeting is a clickable link, and under that, you should have all the materials easily clickable, which will also bring you right there.
Okay, do, John?
Yes.
Questions?
Yeah, it's John Mahoney, just to go back, I want to be sure I understand, with the roof line, particularly the upper-story roof line, run, it currently runs east-west, as I look at the survey and the design, is the roof at that level changing so that it's encroaching into the, what should be the step-back down more, or is it the same as what it currently is, right? There's, from the property line, you have to come in on the second floor a certain amount. And I realize that we're an undersized lot, I'm just trying to understand what is changing on the second floor.
I don't think anything.
This is.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yes, this is Steve Osley. Yeah, we, what we're doing is, we're changing the ridge from side to side on the house, or east to west, to, basically to north and south. And what this allows us to do is to use the front of the house, which right now is the roof, the roof frames off the top of the first floor wall in the front, there's just two dormers, that are, that are basically not even usable. So what we've done is changed the ridge 90 degrees, front to back on the house, which has also helped us to keep the eaves as low as possible, and so we're in the couple of small areas that we're increasing the non-conformity at a minimal.
If minimal, what would you estimate that to be, Steve? Because I'm guessing you're non-conforming on this issue as is.
It does, it does, the back, the back of the existing house now is existing non-conforming as it is, but it's only for a small section of it.
No, that part I understand, but the roof, it itself, right now, because it runs east-west, it's probably not meeting the setback requirement.
Correct, yeah, but it leans towards the back of the house because of the way it's framed, but you're absolutely right, it's an existing non-conforming now.
Okay, and then any, just any estimate of how much that changes, and in what direction, plus or minus by reorienting the roof?
As far as, like, square feet or anything?
Yeah, I mean, how, yeah, I guess, square feet would be one way to do it, how many, how much more is the non-conformity in terms of the step-back for height?
We're literally adding about, not even, not even 100 square feet of roof that would be increasing the non-conformity. And, and again, the height, it's, it's, it's not a level lot, so it's a little bit hard to say, at the rear of the house, at the rear of the house, the new design will actually improve the non-conformity, it's just in the front areas where we're gonna increase a little bit, so it's almost, it's almost a wash.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this variance? Anyone here to speak, to oppose the variance?
Wait, I don't think, hold on one second.
Okay.
Kaye Blackden, are you here to speak for this one?
No, I'm, I'm from Grace Farms.
Oh, okay, awesome, sorry. And I think, Luigi, what case did you tell me you were for?
534 West Road.
Okay.
Okay, Patrick or Mimi, would you like to say anything else?
No, I think we've, you know, we've worked with Steve, we've tried to keep it, the variance is as minimal as possible, we've worked with our neighbors, and they're, you know, they're supportive, and we hope you are too, so thank you for the opportunity.
Steve, did you have anything, any more comments to add?
Sure, yeah, just, just one, we've really, we really have tried to keep this all tethered to earth as much as possible. Overall, the, the house is lacking, you know, existing things that do present problems for, you know, daily family life, what we've tried to do is incorporate some simple, modest items into the plan, make this a really good house for the future and for the Leahys, and without really imposing anything on the. house for the future and for the Laheys, and without really imposing anything on the neighbors. And we tried to really keep everything as minimal as possible.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the board? Any last questions?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, we're going to go into our business session. Okay, board members, discussion? Any thoughts?
You know, one thought I have, it is...
Richard, can you just state your name, please?
Hello, this is Rich Territu. You know, I just note the variance that was granted back in, you know, early 2000 and their, you know, as far as square footage anyway, within that original variance. Well, I know it may not be relevant today, 18 years later, but at least it's something to be noted.
Yeah, that they're dropping the square footage?
Right, I guess one is 170 square feet.
Yeah.
Well, and the ability to encroach into the setbacks, which they're not doing.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So it, it's a reduction.
And I thought the aerial view was very helpful, and I didn't notice it when I visited the property, how it is really off-center. I mean, obviously you can tell it's further back on the property, but the fact that it's so off-center really, the yard is, it's challenging there. Anything else? Jessica?
Actually, Laura said pretty much what I was just going to say. So sorry, this is Jessica Carden. So I'm in agreement with Laura that the position of the lot and the lot size creates a lot of challenges. And I think in light of the prior variance that was given, that they've made some very good plans to try to stay within what was previously granted, and also actually ask for less of a nonconformity.
Okay. Ben, would you like to add anything?
I just, when I looked at the...
Can you state your name?
Sorry, Ben Byless. When I looked at the aerial and I saw that large building next door, further one, one lot west, I wondered how that came to be. I mean, it overshadows this little house, and it's two and a half stories high. It seems to be right up against, if not over, any kind of setback. And relative to what the Laheys are asking, it seems like they're, what they're asking is relatively minor compared to that.
Okay. Beck, Becky?
Yeah, I agree with what you all have said. I just, I have a question. In the packet, there was a memo to the planning and zoning department from the Department of Public Works about, you know, runoff and storm, stormwater. Is that something that if we made a motion to approve the variance, we would need to reference this as a condition?
Lynn, what do you think about that? Thank you, Becky. I appreciate you mentioning that because I did notice that as well and I forgot to mention it.
You can reference it. That was, engineering opined on it already, and they're going to opine on it a second time when it goes to P&amp;Z. And so you can add that as a condition that they need to, they would get it also as a condition at P&amp;Z.
Okay. Thank you. Luke?
I'm all set.
Okay, John?
No, I'm all set. I'm ready to make a motion if nobody else would like to.
Okay, go ahead, John.
I move that we grant the variance as submitted, subject to the addition of the engineering memo, I guess it is. Lynn, if you'd correct me, that'd be great. And that the hardship is the undersized lot, particularly with regard to width, and that the, that the application is mitigated by a reduction in the allowable square footage and encroachments of a previous variance.
Can anyone second that?
Byless will second.
Okay. We can start our vote. Luke, can you start?
Passion in favor?
Ben?
Byless in favor.
John?
Mahoney in favor.
Jessica?
Carden in favor.
Edmonds in favor? Is that everyone? Variance is granted. Thank you. Okay, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. You can go.
Unless you have nothing better to do with three kids.
All right.
Okay, I'm gonna unmute David Rucci and his team. Can you just read the 534 West Road?
Okay, yes. Hold on, just give me one second so I can get that in front of me.
David, can you speak?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. And is it the Samuels, Lauren and Justin, that are your clients?
Yeah, so it's Lauren and Justin Samuels, and it's Luigi Almondra.
Yep, they're all through, all of them are unmuted. So once Laura reads the case, she'll give you the go to start.
Okay, it's 534 West Road. Do I need to read all the sections, Lynn?
Yeah.
And the whole thing upon application of David Rucci?
Yep.
Okay. David J. Rucci, Lambert, Q. and Rucci, authorized agent for Justin and Lauren Samuels, who are the owners for a variance of sections 3.5, point E, point 3, and 7.1, point B, point 2, to allow the renovation of illegally nonconforming two-car garage 16.2 feet from the side yard setback to be located and enlarged to a three-car garage 19.5 feet from the side yard in lieu of 50 feet for property located in the four-acre zone, map 27, block 25, lot 109. Yes?
I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead, David.
Okay, thank you. Lynn, so yes, I'm representing the Samuels this evening in connection with their application. If I could ask Lynn just to pull up the map 3813, that's a part of our text. Essentially, this lot was a part of a fairly, it was only a two-lot subdivision, but it was a fairly large subdivision in the sense that the rear lot was something like 10 acres, and this front lot was carved out to four acres. The reason I bring it up is just based on the fact that as a part of that subdivision, they essentially allowed the two-car garage, which was from the existing structure, to remain. And the subdivision board and the variance board gave them a variance in order to actually allow that garage to be there. And that's the same garage that we're speaking about today. It's a two-car garage with actually some additional storage area off to the west side of it. So it's, it's close to a three-car garage now anyway. So here's that first lot, here's that subdivision I was talking about. And you can see the lot in the front that that garage is still sitting, essentially in the same place, that and the area that's the additional storage area. And that's the way it's been for quite some time. That was, nothing's happened to that garage. There was a renovation done to the, to the main house, recent, not recently, but it was in the last four or five years or so. But the detached garage was never touched. It was left in that same position. At the same time that that garage, there was, there was also the allowance of allowing propane tanks to remain within the setback as well. And I think it's important to note that when we're talking about the setback here, the setback, the nice thing about this property is the sense that the setback also has in it a 25-foot setback. In other words, it's not as if you're talking about property lines that are right next to each other with a setback of X from one area and Y from, from the other. What you're really talking about is you have this 15 feet today plus the 25 feet of the actual accessway. And I think that's important to note because it essentially gives you another 39 feet before the next property line. And then Higgins, who are on the other side, they're also another 50 feet away. So you have a much larger distance than perhaps you might have if you were even talking about the last application where, you know, your property lines, there's no, there's no additional 25-foot accessway in between there. And I just think it's important to note, in this particular case, I know that sometimes you get cases like that, but you're actually measuring from the accessway. You're not measuring necessarily from where the property lines start. You're getting that extra 25 feet. If you could pull up the next map, please, which is the proposal?
No, hold on one second.
Existing right there.
Okay, okay, hold on a second.
So the proposal is to essentially remove a portion of this particular garage that's within the setback. It's roughly 15 or so feet away from the setback, and to move it about 19.5 feet away from the setback. I think that's still the, that's not the proposal.
No.
It's still the same one, yeah. That was, I think, the last document I gave you. So we're basically essentially going to pull it back away from the, the accessway or the property line and sort of catty-corner it more towards the house. We still have to leave a distance in between where the house is now, based on the turning radiuses and the driveway. In other words, you know, you may say, well, why don't you just move the whole thing out? We can't really do that because it would, for a couple of different reasons. Number one, we have turning races right now for the existing driveway. And number two, we have some real mature trees on this particular piece of property to the west that we don't want to disturb. And even if we wanted to move it to the other side of the property, we really can't do that either based on where the 1960s pool still is, is in existence. This addition, just we can show that. Oh, there we go. Okay. So as you can see in the back, you'll, you'll note that, number one, we're burying all the propane tanks, so those will no longer be in the setback. There's a mistake on this survey. There is no proposed generator there. I'm not sure why that's still there. That should be removed. That's not even on that side of the house anymore. It was moved to a different spot. So as a part of this application or map, if, if we're fortunate enough to get any sort of approval, I would have to be sure that that is not actually accurate where that proposed generator is. It's not there, nor will it be there, and we're not asking for it to be there. You will note in the back, you'll see portion to be removed, and you'll see that little sort of spotted line there. And we're pushing everything, I guess, to the southwest. And then you'll see the hatch line, which shows sort of the addition, that we moved up the, the storage area and sort of expanded that about two feet and moved it up to counter the, the front of the, to start on the front of the, of the garage itself. The depth of the garage is staying the same. It's still roughly about 24 feet in depth, so that's not changing. It does bow out a little bit here to 35 feet, I think, from 30 feet, just based on the addition, by adding to the front of the storage area. We think this is a good plan in the sense that we've, we've taken some portion away from the setback area, and it used to be that this garage was 100% in the setback area. Now it's only about 75% in the setback area. So we think that's, that's an appropriate thing to bring to your attention as well. And I, there is a document from RKW, Lance Rovain, showing that calculation. In general, you know, the, the Samuels have done a really nice job with this particular piece of property in the sense that, you know, they've renovated this old kind of stately piece of property. There's all sorts of mature trees on it. I'm not sure if you all got to go out and look at it, but it's really quite spectacular, some of the trees that are on this property. It is limited in the back for some of their areas as far as wetlands go and ponds go and existing pools go. But a lot of their design for both when they renovated this house and for this garage was in keeping with sort of the character of this particular piece of property. Put in perspective, I mean, this property could have about 8,700 square feet of coverage on it, and this property, even with 193 square feet, which is what the addition will be, will only be about 4,000, 4,175 square feet. So we think it's a modest amount to request as far as 193 square feet. So we're requesting that this be approved based on the hardship that the lot itself is narrow, which is what the initial reason was, that they had to allow the secondary, had to allow the frame garage to remain in it. The second thing is the topography of the lot and the, and the mature plantings on the lot. We're removing one nonconformity as far as the propane tanks go. They will no longer be in the setback. And we're also reducing the nonconformity with respect to moving this garage further away from the setback. And once again, the setback also has the benefit of an additional 25 feet of the accessway that's along it. We did hear from one neighbor who went directly to Lynn, who, the Jorleans, who live behind this house. They actually own the accessway, and their concerns were really, you know, what am I going to be looking at? Are you moving it closer to it? You know, is it moving further away? What's going on with the propane tank? We did indicate to them that the siding was going to be the same as the house, and it was going to be painted the same as the house. The, it is going to be a bit taller. It'll still be underneath the regulations for an accessory structure. It's going to be roughly about 18 feet, which I think you can see on one of your architectural plans. And that it's going to be sort of angled more away from the Jorleans property, and that area is going to be cleaned up. So from the perspective of the Samuels, they thought that regardless, that the Jorleans would be certainly happier going by the new garage based on what's there now today.
Do they have any thoughts about putting some screening in?
I can let the Samuels talk about it. I know they were going to clean it up, screening. I don't know if that was something they were thinking about, but I...
Along the back where the access...
Are they going to opine it? If I can ask Lauren and Justin, do you want to just state your name and answer that?
Hi, Justin Samuels. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hi. Yes, with that whole side of the property that runs along the access road, I mean, it does have some planting existing, but actually part of the nice thing for the neighbors is it's quite open. So when they get, when they drive down there, you can see over, you can see over our land down to the pond. So you probably wouldn't want to plant it too much, but it does need some filling in a part, you know, some small planting. It has a lot of uonomus, the red, the one that turns red in autumn, which is actually an invasive species. We probably, I've tried to remove those wherever I can and just plant with more, you know, kind of benign native species, so to speak. So, yeah.
Questions from the board?
Question, Ben Byless. David, in the drawing that shows the hatch arc and what's going to be moved and what will be added, there's a 26 or 25-foot maple tree. Is that the obstruction to moving the whole garage out of the, out of the setback?
That's one of them, yes. Because in order to move it up and around to try to keep it in the setback, you would have, you would be disturbing that particular tree.
But if you took that tree out, you could swivel this garage about 90 degrees and put it at the end of the turnaround, and it would be pretty much out of the setback.
You might be able to do that. The, the problem, the only issue that we have with that is that that particular side of the house was basically designed, it's all windows. So the design of the house is designed to look out over that area of the house, meaning that, you know, it's looking, yes, right now it's the frame garage, but it also takes, it looks out to the west, which is sort of one of the designs that they kept. So it's not something they want to really do as far as moving that garage closer to them because by moving it closer to them, they lose that view, that particular view.
All right. And what, can I mention one thing, David?
Of course.
That we did, yeah, that we basically kept to the same footprint of the existing property to keep everything in keeping with how it was and try and, you know, keep the integrity. integrity of it. And by moving the garage forward, we would have, it would have really changed the whole character, because you would have had a much larger mass, you know, whereas at the moment, the garage is, it's smaller, it's more in proportion to the front of West Road in a sense. It's nicely proportioned, the way that pool sits with the existing house and the garage. So, there was an intentional decision to try and keep everything the way, the way it was,
Lynn, Luke Tashin here.
Laura Lucas.
Luke, go ahead, Luke.
It's my understanding, at the end of the day, that this is making it significantly more conforming, so I don't see much of an issue here. I'm under the belief that they probably can do this as a right. I mean, if he's making it more conforming, I don't know what we're gonna, what the objections would be to this.
Any other thoughts from the board? Okay, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this variance? Is there anyone here to speak, to oppose this variance?
There's, Laura, there's no one in the audience except applicants for the additional cases on the agenda.
Okay.
Move that we allow them.
Hold on a second. Mr. Rucci, anything last that you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Samuels?
No, thank you. I'll say thank you for your consideration. Appreciate it.
Okay. The board will now go into its business session. Any discussion from the board on this application?
It's rich, carried to. I do not have any discussion. I understand it and would support it.
Actually, Laura, can we, as alternates...
Becky, go ahead.
As alternates, we couldn't, shouldn't be participating in the business question, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I remove my comments.
We always like to hear from you. That's okay.
What'd you say? I remove my comments.
This is Ben. Luke has brought up an interesting question. Is it true that anytime a request is made that reduces the nonconformity, we have no essential jurisdiction? It's by a matter of right, as he says? I mean, it doesn't have to be answered tonight, but it's certainly a provocative statement, and I'd like to know better whether it's true, because if it is true, we could save a lot of time.
I'll ask town council, but they, if you note, they are, they are keeping some parts of the garage, but they're also adding some parts in the setback.
Right, but the net effect is to make it less nonconforming.
Yes, but they are putting some portions of the new piece that they're adding to the garage in the setback. So, I'll ask town council. He'll be on later.
All right. I would appreciate that.
Okay, anyone have a motion for this variance?
To approve the variance for the reasons stated, that it's a reduction in nonconformity and that there are valid reasons why it can't be moved any other way.
Anyone to second that?
Passion and favor, I'll second it.
Oh, that was Byless moving.
Okay.
Luke, can you repeat your name?
Luke Tashin, I'll second Ben's motion.
Okay. John, can you start the voting?
Mahoney in favor.
Ben?
Byless in favor.
Luke?
Tashin in favor.
Jessica?
Carden in favor.
Edmonds in favor. Okay, your variance is granted.
They're on...
Yeah, I see. Okay, you're welcome to stay, or you can go off the call if you'd like. Thank you.
I'm gonna, can you read the next one? Appeal of order for 44 Brookwood, and I'm going to unmute the sustenance.
Okay.
Appeal of order, Carolyn and Chris Gutson, owners of 34 Brookwood Lane, appeal the issuance of a zoning permit issued to Michael Diamond and Rebecca Ford for the violation of planning and zoning regulation, section 6.5(c)(2), located 44 Brookwood Lane, map 39, block 41, lot 39.
Is there, who is speaking on this matter?
It should be Carolyn Sussman, right?
Carolyn, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, and my husband, Chris, will be speaking. He has a prepared statement. We're probably going to ask you to pull up some photos that we have submitted.
Okay, thank you.
And you can hear us, okay?
Yes.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone, for your time tonight. I'm Chris Suzanne, and don't worry about, nobody pronounces our last name correct the first time. This is my work in Maryland. We live at 34 Brookwood Lane, and to get to our property, you need to drive up a private lane or an access way that runs along the north boundary of 44 Brookwood Lane. We have a right of way through 44 Brookwood, and our neighbors at 36 Brookwood have a right of way through our property. I'm sure you have all read our appeal, but just to reiterate, we are appealing a zoning permit for a fence installed along the private lane that is in excess of six feet and in violation of section 6.5(c)(2). This is about the safety of our children. We have a six-year-old and a 10-year-old and two dogs. For context, while the private lane is not legally a street, in many cases, it acts like one. There is a steady flow of trucks up and down the lane, FedEx, UPS, garbage trucks, contractors, landscapers, in the more normal times, Uber drivers. Even just last week, our neighbors on Country Club Road used the lane to remove trees, the same ones that typically require the police to guide traffic. We do have two small fences on a portion of our lane that read caution, children at play. Needless to say, some drivers still race up and down the lane. Just today, a truck hit our mailbox and knocked it over for the second time in two weeks. But the issue here is the fence is so tall that it dramatically reduces visibility. When driving up the lane, the driver cannot see any aspect of our yard until you are directly on our property, just as the fence ends. If a child or dog were to run across the lane, there's no time for the driver to stop. In terms of the fence, it averages over six and a half feet and in some places is seven feet high. The panels of themselves are six feet, one inch, and you can see that in photo number eight that was submitted. Are you able to pull up the photo by chance? I'm sorry, I'm referencing these, I guess, out of order. Photo number eight.
That's okay.
We can go through all of them also, just to give everyone a reference of what we're talking about and the points in the fence.
That's fine. There's just a lot of stuff. Everyone had a lot of, a lot of material, so there's a lot of things to...
It's sideways, but you can see 73 inches. It's six foot, one inch. There you go. Nice job.
That's just of the panel itself.
That's, I got it. Then, the posts to the fence add another three inches, plus, in some cases, the fence is planted seven inches above grade, and you can see that in photo seven. If you could pull up photo seven?
That's showing how these...
That's right.
Okay.
At the corner of the fence by our property line, the fence is seven feet, three inches, and you can see that in both photos number three and photos number four.
So, my husband is 6'3", just for reference.
Yeah, so I'm 6'3". You can see how much higher it is than me. This is the most unsafe part of the fence and where visibility is most obstructed. I'm not even sure if our neighbors at 44 Brookwood can see this part of the fence as it is the farthest point from their house and through a wooded area. So, after our initial inquiry and the staff's response, our neighbors tried to artificially alter the natural grade last year by throwing dirt under the fence, and you can see how that has since washed away in photo number six. And that's really it. Thanks for your time and consideration, and just please keep in mind, this is about safety, and a seven-foot fence is not a six-foot fence. Thank you.
If you could also, if there's a picture of coming up the lane, I don't know what number it is, and it just really highlights the fact that you cannot see that our house...
Yeah, that's a good one.
Like, our house is right where my husband is standing. It's right there, and so for drivers coming up this lane, if a child were to run out, they would have no time to stop.
And where the paving changes, that's the property line.
Where my husband is standing is the, yeah. So, that's clearly, he's 6'3". And it's not like it's a clear fence. It's not a deer fence. It's a stockade fence. You can't see through this thing. Discussion from the board, thank you so much for your presentation. Does the board have questions? John Mahoney?
Yes, Lynn, a question for you, Lynn. Reading the regs, the height limitation is six feet. How is that measured, particularly when you have a situation such as this one where it's on a sloping site?
Well, it's measured from above the finished grade is typically how it's done. So, each panel, but they, the panels are also staggered, as you see.
I know, but if, within the length of the panel, you measure the average height, the lowest height, or the maximum height, right? Because the panels, even within a panel, the grade changes.
Yeah, the regs don't specify, but it's just measured from finished grade, but the panels come to just over six feet. When you add the finial posts, and it goes taller, and some of the panels, based on the slope of the land, are taller at certain points. But, I mean, the reg doesn't break it out how to do it on a slope property. It just says from finished grade.
Okay, thank you.
I do know when we stopped in and we spoke with Ben Winters for the first time, we asked a similar question, and his response then was, the posts do count? And I said, well, you know, because of the slope, some is closer to six feet, though all of it is over six feet. And then on the, you know, the downhill part of where the panel would reside is much higher. And when I asked him that, he said, any part, any and all of the fence has to meet the six-foot requirement, and that, you know, was critical in us, you know, appealing.
So, thank you. So, Lynn, just to be clear about the post, so that has to be six feet? That obviously is not. So, I see the panel is six feet or above, but when you add in the post, is that supposed to be six feet as well, like in photo number, I think it's, hold on?
According to Ben, yes, everything has to be six feet.
Yes, it should meet six feet, but further on in that section, it allows for fences taller than six feet.
I'm not following you.
So, yes, they are supposed to be six feet according to the regulations. In 6.5(c)(2) specifies the height of the fence, and it says it needs to be six feet when it's between the property line and the edge of the stepback line. And if you were to go to 6.5(c)(6), it allows for a fence taller than six feet above ground, and that would require the issuance of a zoning permit. We do allow for fences and walls as tall as eight feet within the building, buildable area of a property.
But those are not right on the property line, right?
Those are set back, correct, to go to eight feet? 25 feet into the property line, or...
So, Lynn, do you, this is John Mahoney. Lynn, question for you again. Where does the fence actually sit with regard to the setback line for the property that has the fence on it?
It's essentially on their property line, right at the, by the access way. So, it's similar to the picture you just saw for 534 West. They have an access way, and it's their side property line that it's going to, that is along the access way.
Okay.
If you look at the houses on Brookwood, and as they've described it, they're the middle lot of a three lot, so they're a rear lot, and they have another rear lot behind them.
Yes, I drove the site this evening before coming here, so I know exactly what you're saying. I guess the only thing I wasn't sure of is whether the access way is an easement or it's actually somehow deeded to neighbors sitting behind, and therefore it's at the
I think it's, I think there's an easement involved. They have a right of access through 44, which is the front property, and the property to the rear of them has an access, access through their property.
So, 44 owns, actually owns the access way?
Yes.
Yes.
Up until the property boundary, and then we own the second part of the access And the fence is on two sides, the northern boundary as well as the eastern boundary.
And it's...
And the eastern boundary is effectively right on the property line.
We have photos that show that as well, how the fence makes a turn onto our property, well, on our, along our side yard.
This is Ben.
Hi.
Lynn, somewhere in the papers, it said that Ben had gone out and spoke, had spoken to both parties, and after discussion, he approved the zoning permit. Do you know anything about that?
Yeah. Do you, we, it was, the zoning, the zoning permit was approved.
Right.
So, what is, it wasn't, it was approved after we went out to look at the site, but what is it that you're, I'm not understanding the question.
Well, what were the conversations that it references, that after conversations with the parties, they decided to allow it?
That we decided to allow it?
Yes.
I'll let Ben speak. He's here, but we...
Oh, I didn't realize that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, he's taking our minutes. But he went out to speak to both parties, and we asked the owner at 44 Brookwood to address it, and at the end of the day, we decided to issue a permit for the fence and the other regulation.
The other, 65(c)(6).
65(c)(6), yes.
What is that? Could you remind us what that is, Lynn?
It reads that a fence higher than six feet above ground level, except for a deer fence, in accordance with section 6.5(c)(3), which is above and refers to deer fences in the front yard, requires the issuance of a zoning permit. which is above and refers to deer fences in the front yard, requires the issuance of a zoning permit.
Well, the reference is to C6, and C6 talks about barbed wire.
But reference to 65C6 is, barbed wire is, razor wire is number eight.
It's my understanding, C6 says you can exceed the four feet with a zoning permit, and they have a zoning permit, is my understanding.
You can, yeah, you can exceed six feet with a zoning permit, yes.
It should be C5, is my point.
No, C6.
I think it's C5. A fence higher than six feet, except for a deer fence, requires the issuance of a zoning permit.
No, you have an old edition.
I have an old one?
You have an older, it should be six.
Well, that's great. Okay.
That explains why Ben's always one step behind us.
It could explain a lot. In any event, you decided to grant this on the basis of what?
The fence was along an accessway. You know, I'm gonna let Ben speak because he actually went out and did the site visits.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ben.
Can you speak?
Ben?
He might have microphone issues. We had it earlier, actually, so.
He's trying to speak.
Oh.
Ben Winter, can you hear me?
Can you type into the window?
I'm speaking. Yes.
God.
Ben, can you type into the window?
Chat.
We, we had spoken to the owner at 44 Brookwood, and we'd asked them to lower the fence, lower the fence height to six feet. And the fence is against the side, it's against the side yard. It's against the accessway. And so after discussions with both the appellants that are appealing it and the owner at 44 Brookwood, we came to the conclusion that the fence was close to where it was supposed to be in height. The finials and the posts ideally should have been much lower. The panels were, because of the slope of the land, it sort of shifts. And there was this section that allowed for administrative approval of a fence taller than six feet.
So you were saying effectively, this is Ben again, the other Ben. Effectively, it was a six-foot fence, you ignored the falls and you ignored the slope?
No, well, there's a rule and there's a reg that says a fence taller than six feet could be approved administratively.
Right, right. And you have to have some basis for doing that, some reason why you exercise your discretion. And in this case, as I've heard you describe it, you didn't think the finials really amounted to much of a change from the basic rule of nothing higher than the six feet. And also, there was this slope that would make the height above ground height about six feet. So it was close enough, is kind of how you decided?
Well, we, Ben just wrote into the window, we explained to the owners of 44 Brookwood, we asked them to lower the fence. Or we noted that there was the other option where they could apply for a zoning permit to allow for a fence exceeding six feet. We went back and forth multiple times.
They've been non-compliant. They've been non-compliant with dealing with it.
Right, but the fence, the fence under six feet in a side yard does not require a zoning permit. So they could do the six-foot fence as a right. This was greater than six feet.
Lynn, it's Luke Tashin here. Isn't the issue not six feet or six feet, one inch? Isn't it that it's in the front yard setback, so it's limited to four feet without a zoning permit?
The front fence would be four foot if it's behind.
That's what I'm saying. It's the front fence they're concerned with, because they can't see.
They're concerned with the side yard, because the side yard is against the accessway.
So they're not concerned about the fence? I thought the side yard fence ran into the front yard setback.
The side yard fence.
Because it goes all the way to the street?
It does, actually.
So it's not one inch, Ben? It's the difference between a four-foot fence and a six-foot, one-inch fence, at least the way I'm looking at the plan.
Was the Ben addressed to me?
Neither, either Ben. I just think that it's a two-foot difference. So when they're saying it's a one-inch difference, and I don't think that's really correct. I think it's for that last stretch of the fence in the setback, I think it's a two-foot difference. I don't know whether that affects my decision or not, because I think whether it's a two-foot difference or a four-foot difference, they have the ability to grant a zoning permit for it, but I just wanted to point out that the zoning permit, I think, was granted for a little over two feet, not for a couple inches.
Well, I don't think the, this is Ben Bielis again, and I take your point. But the appellants have not really expressed any opposition to the fence being more than four feet in the front yard. So as I understand it, the thing they're worried about is the safety of their children, and that's a function of fence along the access road. And if the fence along the access road were six feet, honest six feet, they'd have no complaint.
I don't think so.
For complaint.
I don't think so, because if I'm looking at the plan correctly, that fence runs parallel to the side all the way to the access road. So it's running in the front yard setback, the last however many feet while it's in the front yard setback. I mean, maybe Lynn can correct me, because my picture on the screen is so tiny, but the way I'm looking at the highlighted part, it's running all the way to Broadwood Lane.
Brookwood.
Brookwood Lane, Brookwood Lane. So that last section, what's the setback there? I can't read the plan. Forty feet? Twenty-five feet? Lynn?
What?
What's the setback in that area?
In the two-acre zone, the setbacks are forty-five feet in the front yard, thirty-five in the side yard.
So it's the last forty-five feet, then, without a zoning permit, would have to be four feet tall, I'm asking?
Um, it's, if, yeah, uh, yes. It can be six feet on the property line, but it should. Yes, it should be six feet along the property line.
Is that, is the side access, that's not considered the front yard, though? Is that considered?
The accessway is the side yard, not the front.
So that could be six feet?
That could be, yeah. And I think what you're, what you might be referencing is 6.9, where you can't have, well, no, when you do a street, but they front on, the front of his house fronts on Brookwood. But the side yard is, should be six feet tall.
But there are parts that are seven feet. Is that what?
It allows for the applicant at 44 Brookwood to apply for a fence that's taller than six feet and with a zoning permit.
Okay, so you, so Ben approved, or the office, the town, the planning office approved a fence that was more than six feet? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And, and I guess what Ben was asking, Ben?
Ben Bielis.
Yeah, why was that approved? What, why did we think that that was a good idea to approve a seven-foot fence?
Well, when you measure parts of the panels, the panels, some of the panels come out at six feet, or?
Not anywhere on this fence is at six feet. Not one part of this fence is six feet. None. None of it.
I don't know if Lynn has, or Ben has to explain their rationale behind their decision. I mean, we went, we've been through this question with Grace Farms and some other things on appeals, on what the standard of appeal is. I'm not sure if we need to, you know, question their judgment or not. I guess that's a question for town council, but.
Okay.
I wasn't questioning.
No, no, I'm saying you, Ben, I'm saying.
I just wanted to understand if there were a rationale.
This permit was granted after we made an initial complaint about the six-foot fence. And then they added more. I know, just the timing of everything was odd. And then they tried to throw dirt underneath it, and that washed away.
Lynn, Lynn, I'm for some reason having difficulty opening up some of the documentation. Could you bring up the survey that Luke was referring to?
That's what I was having a hard time looking at, too.
Yeah.
It doesn't, because we took a picture of it to, hold on one second.
It ends up going to a green screen for me on my computer when I try and look at it, so. Because for the, the house that actually faces on Brookwood, whose fence we're talking about, I think Luke is on to something that that fence extends into the front yard setback. For them, it's a side yard fence, but I don't think it can go into the front yard setback at six feet.
That's what I was trying to say. When I'm looking at page 141 on the zoning regulations, Section 6.5, the images.
Yeah, I can't bring it up. It's, it's not coming up.
Well, maybe, maybe you can look at it for me. How far towards Brookwood Lane does that fence go?
Hold on one second, because I gotta, I gotta open the other computer.
Let me email this to her.
And that's, I think, Luke, you're right. It's a secondary issue to the six feet.
Lynn, I have a, this is Jessica Carden. I have a question, just to clarify the timing of the appeal. My understanding, I thought it was supposed to be within fifteen days of permit being granted.
There's, well, the people that were granted at 44 Brookwood would have been granted a zoning permit, and they should have advertised it, and that would have limited the window. I don't believe they did advertise it, so I think the window is still open.
I appealed before they advertised.
That wasn't clear from the paperwork, so thank you for clarifying that.
What are, we're waiting for you to pull up a survey. Is that what we're doing, Lynn?
Yeah, I can't pull it up, because I'm on a different computer for that. But I think, so let me just be clear. What you're asking is for the front portion of their, of the 44 Brookwood property, where it goes from the property line at Brookwood Lane, forty-five feet back?
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes, shouldn't that portion of it be no more than four feet pursuant to 6.5 C2A?
Is that portion on the wall? Yes, part of it's on a wall. I don't know the foot, how many feet is on a wall, but part of it is on a wall.
Am I allowed to speak at this time? It's Rich Kavik, Laura.
Yes, Rich.
Yeah, just one overall observation, and I've been involved in similar situations on our road. Yeah, I understand there was a prior process of getting a permit, appeal, and so forth. I guess what I'm hearing from the homeowners, that they're concerned about a safety issue. So isn't the appropriate action, no matter what happened in the past with the town legally permits, that someone from the town go out, assess the safety concerns, and report back? And then a decision is made? Because in my mind, even if something is done totally legal, and it poses a safety issue that is a unique circumstance, and then a town official agrees with it, then there's some cause of that structure be modified. So aren't we talking about the same thing here? I mean, if they have a legitimate concern that there's a safety issue for, you know, children, pets, grandmas, whatever, and it's substantiated, I think we need a separate report, or someone does in town, so that the decision could be made what to do for the safety of all concerned.
Rich, that's not our prerogative. Our prerogative is to enforce the zoning regulations. That's a private cause of actions. People bring up causes of action for spite fences and things like this all the time. It's common cause of action. But our job is not to adjudicate private causes of action. It's to determine what the zoning regulations say. And if someone believes it's a safety issue, they could always go to Superior Court and seek an injunction or something else. But that's not our role. That's a court's role.
Yeah, but we always take the neighbor's opinion into consideration when we're ruling. So, I mean, I think that there's something to that.
I mean, wasn't an appeal granted originally, anyway?
No, this is the appeal. The zoning, the special permit was issued.
I'm sorry, the special permit was issued.
Right, and this is the appeal for granting of that special permit. And so we have to decide, was that special permit properly issued? And if we think it was, we uphold it. If we think it wasn't, for whatever reason, including perhaps safety issues, then we can, we can decide that it should not have been issued, and we can withdraw it.
Okay.
I agree with Ben on that, except it's a zoning permit.
I understand.
This is Becky Walsh, and I was able to pull up the survey. And I'm looking at it. It's where the yellow line goes all the way up the accessway, and then it makes a right to the back of the property, correct?
Yes.
So I think the back portion where it abuts the appellant's house or property is what they're most concerned with, with the safety. And I don't think that does fall into the front yard setback, Luke. So I think the back portion where they have a concern, it is six feet. But if it's more than six feet, it shouldn't be. But I would ask the people appealing this, excuse me. You know, if you reduced, in my mind, I think you'd have to reduce the height of the fence more than a foot or more than a couple inches to still have that sightline of a child in the yard. So I'm wondering what you're, what you're looking for. I think you probably are looking for more than just a foot off that fence.
Well, from a safety perspective, I mean, if you just stood on our lane and listened to, you know, watch a UPS truck come racing up, purely from a safety perspective, you'd want to have three feet or four feet, especially if you have a six-year-old. And just to go back, I realize you're trying to solve this other side yard, front yard, setback rule. The unsafest part, if you, from photos three and four, it is the side, it's the last panel of the side yard that measures up to seven feet, three inches. Ironically, if you stand on the lane and look towards our property, the panel on the east side, where you make the turn, is even taller from that vantage point. So, but yeah, so I hope that helps a little bit. But yeah, it's a, it's a visibility issue.
Luke Tashin here. Lynn, could I share my screen so you can see the survey, so I can point out the part I have a question with?
You can't, because the rules are preset by the town. We can't share it. Only I can share. Sorry.
Because I think the issue is, is the last forty-five feet they're worried about, the forty-five feet along, along the road. Because why would they care about the part further back than forty-five feet?
So the last forty-five feet closer to their property is what you're saying?
No, I'm saying the forty-five feet that are the closest to Brookwood Lane. Is that the forty-five feet they're concerned with?
No, they're about forty-five feet closest to their house. Yeah, the rear. So it could go down as a right to be a six-foot fence.
As a closest to their, am I looking at the same thing? This is the plan that was attached to?
Yeah, you're looking at the front by Brookwood Lane. They're the middle property on that survey.
Oh, so their house isn't the house in the picture on this survey?
Their house is the house in the picture. They're, they're, they have the house in front of them, which is to the left of them on the survey, which leads out to Brookwood Lane. And there's another house to the right of them, behind them, which leads further into Brookwood, into, that's 36 Brookwood.
And are they worried about the portion of the fence next to Brookwood Lane? Or the portion on their property line, which is like about in the center of the plan, where there's a crease down the middle?
Yeah, that's exactly. They're looking at the part of the panels that are closer to their property line.
Oh, on the crease, but along the right-of-way.
But on the right-of-way.
But on the right-of-way, yes.
Ah, so it's forty-five feet as a portion of the fence along the right-of-way? Is that right? Because it looks like it's much more than forty-five feet from, from Brookwood Lane to the property line along the access.
along the access way.
How many feet is that?
I would say, um, 300 to 400 feet.
Right, okay. So it's the last 45 feet of that, that is of concern, is a safety issue, because they won't, people might not see children in cars, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
Okay, so it's not where it turns right and crosses the front of the property. It's the end of the portion of the fence that's closest to their house, but along the access way.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on which way you're coming. If you're on, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Just thinking.
Because it's the, you know, the, where the, the two sides of the fence come together. Whether you're on the lane coming up, visibility is obstructed. But if you're a little kid standing on our grass, it's, it's the other side of the fence that obstructs visibility down the lane.
I got it.
Both, both sides towards the corner cause a visibility issue, if that makes sense.
I got it. Okay. Ben, I'm sorry. I think I got us a little bit wrapped around the ankle, or around the axle, because the first 45 feet is in the front yard setback. The last 45 feet is where, or the last portion of this is where it creates the hazard for the appellant's, uh, children, et cetera, right? Right. But I, I still think there's maybe a problem with the first 45 feet. That's not the issue to Luke's point that they're raising. Right. Because the first 45 feet shouldn't be more than four feet. Right.
And is it? Yes. It's more than, it's, it's more than four feet?
Yeah, I was confused, this Luke Tash being confused with the side they're complaining with. I'd still say the first 45 feet are two feet too high. But I, I didn't realize it was the back. I don't think that's same, I don't think the back has to be four feet. I think the front part has to be four feet, but I guess that's not.
I agree with you. The back doesn't need to be four feet.
This is Carden speaking. Uh, I think, you know, just bringing it back to the specific section that they're appealing, it does state that no fence post column, pre-stained wall, or portion thereof should obstruct the view, but also should be constructed in a way where it's six feet in height above finished grade. Um, you know, when behind, in the front yard, behind the front yard setback, but more importantly, six feet in height above finished grade between the side or rear property line. And that seems to be the, the access road. And if these panels, to begin with, even without including the post and the finial type cap, are 6.1 tall, just from the width of the, or the, I guess, the height of the panel section, then that's already above the, the requirement. And it's, the picture showed in several places, it's almost a foot above grade. So I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, what's the question?
Thank you.
Well, I'm trying to understand, I guess, the value of the, why there was a retroactive permit granted on some aspects of this. But I guess the point would be maybe asking, based on the appeal, what the redress is that you're seeking? Is it just select, um, you know, reinstillation? I, I'm just curious, based on the effect of the appeal, what would be the course of action?
Yeah, I mean, I'd, some, some version of, I, I don't know the exact width of each panel, but, you know, so each panel's 6'1" before the grade and the posts. But if you graduated them down, so it went 6'5", 4'3" to the corner in both directions, it would create visibility and take that safety issue away.
The fence needs to be six feet tall. The fence needs to be six feet tall, just.
But then it's still, it's still.
If you look, yeah.
It does block visibility very badly, but I, I didn't even think that was an option, that we could fight it.
Um, this is Ben Bielis. Lynn?
Hi, Ben.
Section, section 6.9 and visibility at intersections apply, or is this not an intersection? Because it's a private road, accessway, and a public road?
But the 6.9 wouldn't apply at the rear of the property. It would apply to the front property on Brookwood.
Okay, okay.
And that, we asked that question as well, because it does serve like a street. There's so much traffic going up and down the street. We've had construction at the house next door to us for 18 months. It's constant. And maybe Ben Winter, if he could, if you're, this is a totally different, this first 25 feet off of Brookwood, I believe he came out and measured that as well. He might have measurements, but I don't know if he's able to talk.
Ben, do you, do you remember their measurements, or no?
Is he talking?
No. Ben, sir?
He's probably typing.
He can, uh...
From 25 feet from where? What 25 feet are we talking about?
Don't talk.
Just, just don't talk. I'm just not gonna, I've been instructed not to talk.
Backing up, Lynn, in just section 6.5A, there's a similar general reference to, um, while not infringing upon public safety and general welfare of adjoining properties with regard to fences. I mean, even if this fence, if that corner was cut a little bit, you know, cur, in effect curved, so it wasn't such a hard edge, making it such a blind corner, you know, just even taking it down to six feet really doesn't address the safety issue. It gets it to six feet, which is less than seven. But if we really have a safety issue, it's almost beyond that.
Right. If, if you go that route, though, that affects every rear lot, rear property lot in New Canaan. They put up a fence on their access way.
Well, not everyone is going to have that specific safety issue, because not everyone is set up that exact way.
No, but there have been others that have complained of similar issues where they purchased a house, and that the house next door had a similar fence that was four or five feet tall, or even six feet tall.
Is there anyone here from 44 Brookwood Lane?
I don't believe so. Um, we just have the applicants from 316 Thomas Hill and from 365 Luke's Wood Road on the hall.
What, I guess I'm asking the board, what, what do you feel like our options are with this? What, does anyone have any thoughts as to how we can move forward?
Well, I don't, this is Ben Bielis. I don't think we can, other than this sort of vague public safety language in 6.5A, I think the zoning reg is that it can't be higher than six feet, and that would include the posts, and it would be measured above grade. So I think what our option is, if we don't agree with the issuance of the permit, is to order that it be reduced to that height.
Can it be further if it, if we feel like it's a safety issue?
I, I don't know.
I would agree with Ben on what we're permitted to do. I don't know that we could take an extra step and say that it should be further lower than what's stipulated by the regulations based on a safety issue with respect to current occupancy. But I do think we could stipulate that it should be consistent with what is stated and required in the regulations.
Yeah.
Or an exact height of six feet, and it should be that above the grade.
And, and that that's measured, that's the maximum height above the grade. Is that what you're suggesting, Jessica?
It, it appears that's how I read it, but yes, this is Carden. Sorry, that's how I read the.
And there is, there is a reference to posts in the regulation. So the post cannot be more than six feet. And then if you add some kind of clearance, the panels themselves obviously have to be less than six feet. That's very true, Ben. And I, and I think we stand in the stead of the zoning enforcement officer, and we, we have a choice of either approving what he did or, or disapproving. And if we find we disapprove, then the permit is, is withdrawn. And the order, and the permit and the fence is now illegal.
Right. What do you think, Becky?
I, I think that that's really the only choice we would have under the regulations. I'm just, you know, wish that it would, I, I don't know how much it's going to help the safety issue, and that, that to me is the biggest concern.
It would be much more sensible if we could have the other parties here
Right.
discuss the possibility of dropping that, that fence down at the corner stepwise, from six feet down to three feet, so there is no obstruction of view. But that's not possible right now, so maybe when we order this, when we find that this is illegal and it has to be removed, then they'll come in and say, well, what about this? How about if we do this, which is what should have happened?
Yeah.
Right. Can I ask, um, the Susannens, is that how you pronounce your name?
Suzanne.
Suzanne.
Suzanne, sorry. So if we did enforce the six foot, and your neighbor had to take part of the fence down, or at least cut it down a bit, do you think at that point, that's going to cost them some money? Do you think at that point, um, you could go to them and say, hey, look, we, we would help you, you know, contribute towards that if you would, you know, take it down even a little further to help us with the safety issue?
I, I, I don't think they would agree to anything that we ask them to do.
Okay.
But we would be, we would be happy, at least for now, getting it to six feet. Sorry. Ben, Ben's dealt with them, so I'm not going to say anymore.
That speaks volumes.
Okay, so, um, does this go into a business session, Lynn, or how does, how does this, is this?
Yeah.
Okay, would you like to add anything else?
No.
Okay, all right, we're going to go into a business session, and the board will discuss.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thoughts from the board? I think we kind of said it. Um, I, I personally am in agreement. I think it should be much lower, but I understand that, because it, it is a safety issue. When I drove down there, you can, I understand if a kid ran out, you cannot see a kid run out. And if a dog or somebody ran out, you can't see it. And, and also, um, this doesn't have anything to do with it, but that side part or the back, the fence along the back, it, it just doesn't make any sense. So, um, I wish we could do more, but I think that we should at least get it down to the six feet.
I think that this, Luke Tash is speaking, I think that there's a starting point, because there's no permission for it right now. The fence on, within 45 feet of Brookwood Lane needs to be dropped down to four feet. And they can come in and apply for a zoning permit if they want, but I think as a starting point, right now it's non-conforming. That has to drop down to four feet. And I think the back, I would agree with Laura, that we, they should drop it down to six feet.
Okay, so, um...
But, but I think we need to, um, be clear that the six feet is, you know, just go back to the regs and kind of clarify the regs, that the six feet should be including the posts and any issuance.
Yes, Luke Tash is speaking, and I think also, because it sounds like nothing might get done on this, we should, um, I forgot what the penalty is, $25 a day or whatever it is. We should, I think, impose the penalty until this is fixed, because the front four feet by the road is non-conforming. It's six feet high right next to the road.
Are we, are we sure about that?
We're, we would have to be sure. I thought Ben Winter had those measurements as well, because he, when he came initially to look at the fence, he, I was under the impression he measured the whole.
Yeah, and so we're not sure. It starts as a stone wall, and then they stack, start to stack the panels on top. And then when the stone wall stops, then it's the full panel. So, but that's not, we weren't really focused on that part.
Right.
Okay, Luke Tash is speaking again. So then we don't penalize, but we say that, you know, we're enforcing, there has to be four feet high and then 45 feet of the road.
And six feet, and six feet to our property line, correct? Would you be enforcing that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
That, but that, the six feet have to include the posts as well, not just the panel. It's got to be the posts.
And would you also include the, the part that?
You know what? I'm sorry, you're not allowed to talk.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm not talking. No, that's okay. It's okay. It's just procedure. I'm sorry.
This is Jessica Carden. I just want to clarify too, that it would be six feet based on the build above the grade line. So that would remove a lot of the other height issues as well, based on how it's currently constructed.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay. So do we make a motion here, Lynn? Could you give us a little guidance on this? How do we?
You're going to either vote to sustain their appeal or deny their appeal.
Okay, so, uh, do I have a, a motion from anyone from the board?
This is Carden.
Go ahead, Jess.
I'm going to vote to sustain the appeal, basically grant the appeal, because I do not believe the permit was granted in a manner that was valid with the consistency of the town zoning regulations, based on the six-foot height on the side yard, based on the build of the height to, from the grade on up, including the post caps.
And also, can, do we add the 45 feet for the four feet?
I mean, I, I don't know that the permit actually addressed that, unfortunately, but I do think that's a concern clearly, that there is a possible issue with the four-foot height requirement under the regulations for the front yard.
Okay, so let's add that into the appeal, that that has to be, uh, taken care of as well.
Yes, problem, it needs to be confirmed first, right?
Yeah, well, it needs to be confirmed. I mean, can we maybe not vote on it till, I mean, there just seems to be so many loose ends here on this.
I think purely by moving to sustain the appeal, it does invalidate the underlying permit. So the whole issue would have to be readdressed anyway.
Readdressed anyway, okay.
This is Ben. I have a, a concern. The, the permit that Ben Winter issued was an exercise of discretion allowed to the staff, to the enforcement staff. They made a decision. I just don't know what the decision was based on. And what I would say is, based on the evidence introduced by the appellant's, the fence is not in compliance with the zoning regs. And that it is, it's therefore, no special permit should have been issued, and it should be reduced to six feet, all posts and grade considered. And that would be my motion.
I can second Ben's motion. I'm fine with that.
I'm not sure it's.
I think you're sort of saying the same thing. I think he's got it a little bit more succinctly, so.
It's, it's not really different. It's just that we're supposed to respond to the fact that this was, we know they were allowed to build more than six feet, because that's what the permit allowed them to do. I just don't find that, in this instance, it's a good exercise of their discretion, because it creates a worse safety issue than otherwise applies.
My understanding too, Ben, is that this was actually a, a permit granted after the build was done. And after the fact build.
Ah, that's interesting.
I mean, that's how I've been reading it, but it seems to me that it was, it was granted after the neighbors who are bringing this appeal had brought the issue to the attention of the zoning team here for a permit review.
Well, we, we frown upon that. And I think that's just another, it adds weight to the idea that this issuance was, it was not proper.
Okay, so will you second that, Jessica?
Second.
All right, so, um, I guess.
I'm carding, seconding Ben Bielis's motion to be official.
Wait, but Laura, just procedurally, you had a motion from Jessica on the floor already.
I can withdraw my motion, and I'll second Ben Bielis's motion.
Okay, is that okay, Lynn?
Yep.
Okay.
Who could stop, want to talk?
All right, I think we are going to vote. Luke, did you want to start the voting?
Well.
Luke?
I wanted to amend Ben's motion before we, um, vote on it. Because I want to also mention that the first, that I want us to include in it, in our decision, that the first 45 feet of, of the fence and wall combination cannot exceed four feet.
Luke, this is Carden. I don't know that that's a clear point yet, from what we've observed. Luke, this is Carden, I don't know that that's a clear point yet from what we've observed. I think that's why Ben wasn't including it in the motion.
Exactly.
It seems clear to me the 45 feet along the public road cannot exceed four feet.
Well, I, I would leave that to the, to the zoning people to decide what is the proper height of the fence that close to the road.
Well, the zoning variance says, the zoning regulations say four feet.
Why can't we just add it to the motion?
Well, first of all, I don't think it was part of the appeal. Secondly, I'm not sure that it's exactly, that's where, you know, it's an intersection frontal thing. I would rather give the staff the opportunity to decide whether or not that is a four foot requirement for what length of that portion of the fence. If they find that the fence has to be four feet its whole length along the accessway, good.
I'm not saying, Luke Tashin, I'm not saying the whole feet along the accessway. I'm saying the four feet along Brookwood Lane, the four, the 45 feet within Brookwood Lane has to be four feet. That's black and white. That's 6.5 AC2. AC2A.
I would, I would direct the staff to consider whether that's the, the way they should rule on this, on this permit. Just leave it to them in the initial decision and then we can, and then we'll see what happens. I just think we're, we're going where we don't have to go. What we have to do is respond to the appeal.
But don't want, don't we want to make it that we're careful? To make sure that it, that it's not six feet all along?
I, I think Laura.
It has to be in compliance with the zoning regs, whatever they are. We know it's already too high, based on the evidence that the appellant's put into this appeal, the photographs. It's too high. So it should be brought within compliance, but that, that means if it's supposed to be four feet within 25 feet of the road, that's, they also have to meet that obligation.
Okay. So are we still in, are you still seconding that Jessica, or?
Yes, Carden, I am still seconding it. I think it's something that our, our town office needs review.
Okay. Are you good with that Luke?
No.
No.
I mean, the regulation's black and white. I don't see why we leave it gray so that we have to come back a second time and hear the same thing about, oh, it's, is it supposed to be six feet near the road or not? It's not supposed to be six feet within the front yard setback. And I think we should put in it, we shouldn't just say something vague like, oh, and the rest of the fence is supposed to comply with zoning. No, I think we should say, the rest of the fence is supposed to comply with zoning, including section 6.5 AC2.
Luke, then, this is Jessica Carden, that's us standing in the feet and position of the town officers as well as the zoning and commission. It, it's not our place to stay when this appeal, this permit that they're appealing from doesn't actually specify that particular subsection of the zoning regs. We'd be adding material that's not present in the appeal.
And we can. Look at the application, but I think their application's broad enough to cover, you know, the height of the fence during the whole length of it, not just the last few feet near the property line.
Yes, it is. And we're, and what they've objected to is anything over six feet. And we're upholding that appeal. And we're directing the staff to consider what should be the, the correct height of that fence along the accessway. And I'm sure if the staff believes it's supposed to be four feet up to a certain point, that's what they'll rule.
Well, we don't want to add anything we, we shouldn't be adding to.
I mean, they, they specifically say, the reason for this appeal is as follows. Please see attached, owners of 45 Brookwood Lane, Brookwood violate planning and zoning regulations 6.5.1.2. And that's exactly what I'm saying I'd want us to include in it. So I don't know why Ben's saying this isn't referenced in there because that's, I just read the wording on this.
Well, they didn't submit any evidence to that point, that's all. They had submitted evidence that said the fence was over six feet tall. And so I would give them what they've asked for, which is a fence that's six feet tall. Except to the extent the staff believes it should be lower.
Except Ben, the survey with, which seems to, that was submitted in the evidence seems to show the first 45 feet.
Right.
Right? So it is in the evidence.
It, it shows that there's a fence along the first 45 feet, yeah. But I don't think.
But they're bringing that up anyway. They're bringing up the first 45 feet as part of it.
Correct, they're bringing up the whole fence.
Well, can we, Luke, can we just say that the whole fence should be in compliance with that particular, the entire length of the fence, all the way down the accessway and then turning it 90 degrees? You know, the, the, the side yard for one property and the rear yard for another, that the entire fence must be brought into compliance with that section.
Yes.
That's exactly what I've, that's exactly what I'm asking. I mean, they end by saying we're asking P and Z to enforce section 6.5.1.2. And I think that that's what I'm asking us to modify, modify the motion to include that we are enforcing 6.5.1.2.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, I agree with that.
So Ben, I think you need to modify your motion, right?
Yeah, would you read it back to me please? I, I would like to amend my previous motion to add a direction to the owners that the, any, any substitute fence that they build must be in compliance with section 6.5 B, no, C of the zoning regs.
C2.
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 I'll second that, Luke Tashin.
Procedurally, I think you just would reject it and send it back to staff.
Well, that's what's gonna happen. With a direction that it become, it be brought into compliance.
Right.
Okay. Shall we vote?
Okay, we're ready to vote. Go ahead Ben, you could start.
Ballas in favor.
Luke?
Tashin in favor.
Jessica?
Carden in favor.
John?
Mahoney in favor.
Edmund's in favor. So your, your appeal has been granted. So. I guess they'll be notified and we will start from there again. I guess we'll start over.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you all very much for your time. Sorry, that was a tough one.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Can we take a two minute break?
Yeah, I think we should take a few minutes, a few minute break before we go on to.
Team Tom and Chill Road is next.
Oh, we're doing Tom and Chill Road? I thought you said that was off.
No, 119 weed is, was asked to extend to June, but then they withdrew this morning.
Okay.
316 Tom and Chill, we heard last month.
Okay, yes, okay. So. I guess, what time is it?
It's 9:07.
Can we restart at 9:15?
We can't restart, we can only, I mean, there's no way to stop it.
Okay, uh, it looks like we lost a couple of our. It looks like John is gone, Ben is gone, Luke is gone.
I'm still here.
Oh, okay. So we should.
Let me know when I can come back.
Are we taking a two minute break then or not? I don't know.
Allowed to do that, Lynn or no?
You can take a brief break, just as if you were in a large room. I'm imagining that everyone needs to use the restrooms, but, uh, that's, we can take a break, but the tape is still gonna run. It's still recording in the cloud.
Okay, so we're gonna take a two minute break and, I mean, we're not, I didn't mean to say we're gonna stop. We're just gonna, it looks like people have gone to refresh themselves for a moment. Okay.
Lynn, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, what I may have to do in about 10 minutes is just go off and then I'm gonna log in through my cell.
Oh, okay.
So you'll, you may see me leave and then I'll just come back in through my cell.
Okay.
Okay, should we go on to the next 316 Tom and Chill? Everybody ready?
Um, I think we're missing Ben and Jessica before we can go on.
Okay.
And Luke.
Oh, there you are Ben. Yes, you're right, Luke is right, is missing. Wayne, are you able to speak?
Yes, do you hear me?
Yes.
We hear her, very good.
Let everyone come back and then.
I apologize for the poor lighting.
Well, we can hear you Wayne, that's a big advance.
Yeah, yeah, you can't see me, maybe it's better that way, yeah.
Didn't mean to imply that.
Is Ben back?
Ben, oh, Ben was just back, we're missing Ben and Luke. Thank you. Luke, are you back?
Back.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to ask now that for 316 Tom and Chill Road. Zoning variance upon. Is that right? Upon application of Fairfield County Engineering LLC authorized agent for Mary Lou Adaja, is that correct? I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing it.
Adaja, I think it's Adaja, yeah.
Adaja King and Praga Adaja. For a variance of sections 3.5D and 7.1B2 to allow for construction of an addition to the principal residence in the front yard setback and to go over the mid, maximum allowable building coverage for property in the two acre zone. Map 30, block 7, lot 18. Okay. Are you, you're speaking for this?
Yes, yes, for the record, Wayne Debanzo, Fairfield County Engineering. We have revised the application. Basically, the, the carport was eliminated, there's now only a small balcony overhang. So we are not requesting a variance for coverage any longer. The total coverage on the lot as proposed is 2,984 square feet, while 2,992 square feet is what would be permitted. So we are not requesting a variance for that. We continue to request the variance for what is technically an expansion of a non-conforming structure. It is the second story addition to the, to the main house. Which conforms with zoning in, in all other regards. It is, the house itself is in the front setback, but the, the addition, the additions and the additional work are all in the rear and it is not increasing any further into the front setback. Nor is the, the use of the property being intensified. It, it's simply improving the usability of the second floor, the bedrooms and the staircase and the flow of that. And that is, that is about the summary of it.
Do we have building plans on this, or we're just going off of what was from last?
Yeah, they had, they submitted revised. Let me, one second, because there's so many items. Hold on, one second.
John, I, one thing we want to be sure of with this is, assuming we go forward, we, we need to remove the prior plan. Is there, the old site plan is in there. We want to be sure we're referencing the correct site plan.
We can do that, but right with, with the executive order, everything has to be posted online. So we've left it up so that people can reference it. But normally we would have removed it and just had the stuff up for this meeting.
Okay.
So it's, it's just because of the unique circumstance. Hold on a second, let me, there's a lot of documents, let me just find that document. Can you see the elevations?
Yes.
Did you want to speak about the elevations?
Uh, no, I, I think probably the relevant elevation there is that middle row on, towards the left, that is, that is the detached garage. And you can see to the right side of it, that is what was formerly the carport and is now just a balcony overhang. And they'll just be parking to, you know, to the right of that on the driveway. And if, if we could see maybe the, the revised site plan, that might be, that might be helpful. Actually, I think that's the old one.
Hold on one second.
That is the old one, yeah.
Okay. Hold on one second, is that still?
This is exactly my confusion.
I, I think that's the correct one, I think I can see the revision date in the title box, I think, I, I can't see enough detail.
Yeah, it come, it, when I tried, when I downloaded and transferred it to the computer to share, it was not so. This is 20, 20. One second, let me go back and there are a lot of documents.
Oh, is, is that the revised one?
That's the survey.
Do you want, will the survey work, or do you want the site plan?
No, the, I think the one you had up just before it looked like a revised site plan. I think that was it.
This is the revised garage.
Right.
That's the old site.
The old one, yeah.
Yeah, that's the detail sheet.
I think that's it, I think if you move over to to see the, yeah. Yeah, that's it.
This is the one with, uh?
Yeah, and if you see, it's just to the left of the, um, the garage, it's, it's a small balcony now, it doesn't, doesn't any longer stick out, you know, much farther to the left, uh, which, where the carport was proposed.
So it's, now it's just on to the second floor, is that it?
Yes, the, the addition on the house, that hasn't changed at all, it's the same, it's the same proposal, it's just a second story addition, and that is the hatch through the, the great area that you can see on the, uh, on the plan, and that is all, you know, conforming to zoning, it's, it's out of all the setbacks. It's just that the house itself is in the front setback and has always been in the front setback.
So, um, we're not increasing the non-conformity, really, we're just building onto a non-conforming structure, is that correct?
That's correct, that's right. And we're, we're not increasing the number of bedrooms even, it, it's the same number of bedrooms.
It seems like it's really gone down from the la, from the last time, the amount of, uh, things you're asking for.
Yes, the, uh, the, uh, once we eliminated the carport, uh, it, uh, there was no need for a, a coverage variance, it's under, it's under what would be allowed now, even, even taking into account the taking in 1991, that was, that was granted.
Any questions from the board?
Uh, this is Becky Walsh, I would just say, I appreciate that you went back and, you know, addressed the coverage issue, and, uh, made it a much better plan to ask for.
Yes, thank you.
I would second that, John Mahoney. Ben?
I think Ben wants to talk.
Oh, you may need to unmute him, Lynn.
That's what's been happening, thank you very much, I felt like I was drowning. And the ship is sailing away, and I'm yelling and screaming. No, I just wanted to get unmuted, that's all, I didn't really have anything in particular to say, thank you though.
What do you think, Jessica?
I agree, um, this is Jessica Carden for the record, I, I agree with the others who have spoken up from, um, the zoning board, that it seems to me that it has taken some steps to reduce, um, the potential variances that they were seeking, um, particularly with removing the coverage and, um, and what they're asking for seems to be consistent, at least with what had been previously granted, at least with respect to the ground level, um, setback issue.
Yeah, and the lot, it's, it's, um, difficult lot there. Luke?
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's, it's rich carriage you're speaking, that, a good improvement from the last time, so.
Okay. Any other thoughts from the board, any other questions? Did you have anything else you'd like to add before we go into a business session?
No, I think, I think that's it, it was all summarize.
Okay. Oh, is there anyone Lynn that is here to speak on, in reference to this?
There is not, and, uh, hold on a second.
Okay.
Um, David, do you want to speak on this? No, everyone else is an applicant, is, is an applicant or, um, for, um, the next item.
Okay. Okay, we'll go into our business session.
I have a request of Lynn, this is Ben.
Yeah, yes.
In your planner's memo for this matter, it seemed to just reproduce last month's, and it didn't take into account the revisions.
Do, um, yes, they submitted, they did submit revisions, yes, that's.
Well, my, my request and suggestion is that in the future, when we have revisions, that your memo also be revised.
Okay.
Okay? Because I was, I thought I was looking at new information here, and it wasn't until I started looking at the backup documents that I realized this was the old stuff.
Right, I think I wrote addendum that they submitted revised plans.
Right, but, yeah.
Okay, I, next time I'll break down their plans, right?
I need, I need a guide.
Okay, that's fine, I can do that.
Okay, is there a, uh, motion for this, um, variance? Luke? Luke needs to be unmuted?
Oh, is he, is he, no, he is unmuted. He just can't speak.
Try again, Luke.
He's unmuted.
Go, try again, Luke.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I, I moved, uh, um, allow the variance, but I want to condition it on reference on the plans that indicate it's going to be a family room above the garage and a storage space with a full bathroom. And we're not approving an apartment up there.
Okay.
Like the reference on plan, um, the second floor plan that says family recreation area with full bathroom, no cooking surfaces, I want to incorporate that into our variance.
Okay, I agree with that. Um, you want to say that again, or you want, or?
So I'd move to allow the, uh, variance, and I'd like to specific, on the grounds that there's a hardship, the hardship being the extreme topography on the lot, and I'd like to can, um, add as a condition to the variance, that we specifically incorporate the reference on the plan for the detached garage, the second floor plan saying family recreation area with full bathroom, no cooking surfaces.
Okay, anyone to second that?
Mahoney will second that.
Okay, uh, Jessica, will you start the voting?
Carden in favor.
Ben?
Ilyich in favor.
Luke?
Passion in favor.
John?
Mahoney in favor.
Edmund's in favor. Okay, your variance is granted.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to read the next item, and I'll unmute the applicants?
Okay, hang on a second, let me make sure I got.
And Lynn, as I said in the chat, I'm just gonna leave and then just dial in and listen.
Okay. I think, um.
Okay. Okay, uh, this is order, uh, appeal of order, David Marquados and Jennifer Home, owners of 1328 Smith Ridge Road, appeal the issuance of a zoning permit issued to Grace Farms Foundation Inc. On February 15th, 2019, for the renovation of existing storage space into office, garage, and storage space in the West Farm, located on the Grace Farms property, 365 Luke Wood Road, map 41, block 38, lot 77. Um, who's going to begin tonight? Amy?
Yeah, this is Amy Sutins, uh, here representing, uh, David Marquados and Jennifer Home, who are also, um, on the call, and just recapping where we were at meeting, end of the period last month, um, Attorney O'Handlon had asked for the opportunity to submit additional information, and, um, uh, address the issues we had raised in the appeal, so I think at this point it makes sense for him to uh, give his statement to you, and then I can, uh, close with our presentation or address any questions you might have.
Okay, is that okay with you? Yeah, okay.
Sounds good, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, uh, members of ZBA, Ted O'Handlon here, thank you for the chance to, uh, we've submitted our letter and to, uh, address tonight. Um, I'll be very brief, because that's a lengthy submission we made, but we thought it was necessary to address the issues, um, and that you could see the full background of the matter. Our position is that this appeal lacks a factual basis. Um, office uses are clearly within the, um, the ambit of any religious institution or federal foundation, special permit use that's been converted to Grace Farms, and so therefore Lynn's decision to find that it was appropriate should be upheld. Furthermore, there are no limits within the 82 acre Grace Farms on how Grace Farms uses its, its administrative function, it can move it from building to building, especially, as Lynn found here, where there's no change to the footprint of any building, and where, um, the interior renovations are very minor, are entirely interior and minor. Thirdly, there is a complete absence of any harm or injury to these appellantents, Wes, the West Barn is about as far from these appellantents as you can get on that, on the Grace Farms property. Um, there's been a number of misrepresentations of what the law is, the special permit does not lock down the site, as has been suggested. The adding of three offices is clearly within our right. I think we've articulated the question in our letter, is that whether Grace Farm, whether the West Barn office uses converted from storage space are within the existing because they're minor, they're interior, and office uses are okay. And, and I think that should end your, your question. We respect these appellantent's rights under the First Amendment to approach their government to address what they perceive as a grievance, but, there are limits on your jurisdiction here. The issue of site activities is outside your jurisdiction, and, and I'm telling you what your own lawyer will tell you, he read my letter before I submitted it to you. The issue of, um, of the intensity or, or anything is, is, um, is outside your jurisdiction. These are zoning issues, not ZBA issues. And that's why in our letter, and you may be surprised at the tone of it, because it's clearer than I thought it was, what I'm used to doing, but, but these appellantents have been heard as we took pains to show you. They have received and exercised all the rights that the law affords any property to, to be heard on zoning issues, and they lost at each step of the way. Five different steps I've shown in there. And the Riordan decision, which was cited to you, makes very clear exactly what I've told you in the letter and what your own counsel will tell you, that the need for stability, I'm reading now, in land use planning, and the need for justified reliance by all parties, the interested property owner, the interested neighbors, not the appealing party, and the town on decisions of zoning authorities. This has to end somewhere. Just because they don't like vision doesn't mean they can continue to raise it. The sixth issue that they raised is, is what I've called the hook. They have appealed the decision you made last fall denying them the operations center, the identical issue almost, but it was even more, more than that. And you found that it doesn't, didn't meet any, any standard for appeal. Therefore, you're bound by that in our view, and you should apply this. But what they're doing, they've appealed that to the Superior Court. They want you to deny this so they can appeal that to the Superior Court, either joint appeals dignify their position. The seventh issue they've raised to you is the suggestion that somehow they've been ignored and not being treated right. And I think we've addressed that at length in there, they have not been ignored, they've been heard. And the fact that people don't agree with them does not mean that they're required, that they have a right to continue to raise issues. And that's why, and the, the Riordan decision makes another point that wasn't discussed at your, at the last hearing. What Ms. Brooks-Abney does in hearing complaints is what's called discretionary, as opposed to ministerial. What she did with the zoning, the building permit application was ministerial, she was required to act on it. What she does with a zoning complaint raised by, whether it's these appellantents or any neighbor, discretionary. And her discretionary acts are not appealable to you unless she chooses to make a conscious decision. The Riordan decision is, is right, right on point on, on that issue. Um, they, they have every right to complain to the first, the Board of Selectment, the Town Council, they have every right to run for office if they think that the new canon is not being done properly, they haven't done that. So that's why we think, and that leads to my conclusion, this is an incredible act of selfishness on any citizen's part. It is their right, selfish is not a legal term. It's their right because it, they have a First Amendment right. Recognizing that they're doing, because they don't like, five different forms to have heard this, doesn't make them grieved. And that's why we say particularly in this context, when what we're doing here in these, in, you know, with a pandemic and the virtual hearings, with everything against the Grace Farms is doing to support the community, it's simply not fair. And when you ask questions like, can we revisit special permit issue, I know you mean well, you are dignifying a process that is not entitled to that dignity, they right to raise this issue, they appeal it, they're gonna put the town and Grace Farms to significant more expense after you deny this, because I think you have to deny in light of your, your decision last year. But I urge you not to make any more of a record than you need to. You have legal questions about Riordan, you have legal questions about Lynn's discretion, ask counsel offline, apply this appeal. But, but again, the questions that Lynn answered on that, on that form are ones that the zoning department creates, is this within the special permit? Yes, it is, this is an office use that they're allowed to, there are no limitations in the scope of their office uses. Are there any complaints pending? No, there aren't. And therefore, is this something that within her discretion, exercising her discretion, her choices? Not anything the law requires her to do, is something that was, that was the right thing to do, and the answer is, yes, it was. Now, the, you know, the whole, all of the issues that they've raised are purely special, you don't have a single affidavit. You don't have a single affidavit from you except as to, as to their claim that they're not time barred by this, and we haven't challenged that. But the issue of eighty-two I think we addressed that. The issue of unchain, an entity that they could have, they could have told you within the last four, you know, four months, you could have seen the diligence they did in their last appeal. Doesn't even exist. And yet they've seen fit to try to, again, hook these zoning, there's these zoning issues that they've taken with the planning and zoning decisions, this. And respectfully, that's not your job and you shouldn't dignify it, recognizing. So all of those issues of activities, all of the issues about about the, the scope of what they're doing are just not germane. And you know, I can tell you being misled also, the numbers that they've presented to you to show that Grace Farms activities have intensified are not realistic because Grace Farms changed its counting methodology to include Grace Farms Grace Community Church. And that's why you see that significant uptick in those numbers last, over the years last year. We didn't tell you that. But your lawyer will tell you that you can't, you know, you can't, that religious, religious activities are not controlled by zoning permit. That church has a right to exist there and the people who come there were excluded from those counts before, but as part of the were included in the, in the zoning board, planning and zoning approved that. This gives you an example of how you're being misled with a record that's far bigger than anything we can amass in, in however many hearings you want to address this. I want you to have, I urge you to have confidence what planning and zoning did and have confidence in what Ms. Brooks Abney has done here. And deny this appeal. Let them take whatever steps they've taken. God knows they're, they've got the town wrapped around any number of axles and flea issues. They're just, they won't be denied because they don't like the answer. Let them go their way and not tie up your business any further. That's our presentation.
Luke, you had something that you wanted to say. I saw your hand up. Luke?
Luke, we can't hear you. Whoa, where'd it go?
You there?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, I accidentally clicked uh, there. When Ed turns to the side, it scratches in and out a lot. It's hard to hear what he says when he turns to the side.
I apologize. Is there something I missed?
Yeah, now it's clear, but a lot of times when you turn, like, we record these, right? So we can listen to this again?
Okay. I apologize. I didn't, I didn't realize there was any problem.
Lynn? Right, we have recorded?
Yeah, it's recorded and it's posted on our website, on our YouTube, on the town's YouTube website. And it's also streaming live right now on Channel seventy-nine and will be available on Channel seventy-nine's archived feed on our website.
I don't believe I missed anything, but I want to listen to this all again. I believe we're gonna, after we hear the testimony today, at least my understanding from last year, I'm gonna continue this. Uh, maybe I'm wrong, if I thought that's what it was and I really don't have time to go through this.
I could repeat it very quickly if you'd like to vote tonight. I think you all would dare try to get some for another month.
Okay. Amy, did you want to, did you want to start?
Certainly. I wasn't sure if there were any other questions for Attorney O'Handlon before I moved on.
Anyone else have a question?
I, I have a question. This is Ben Vilas. Mr. O'Handlon, I'm not sure I caught it and I'm asking you to clarify. Did I understand you to say that zoning regulations do not apply to churches?
Can't, you can't limit the exercise of religion and typically in zoning. When you do, you have to be very careful. And, and, and zoning permit that was issued would not include any counts on the, of the Grace Community Church activities on Sunday morning. The settlement with the, with the other neighbors, the, the count methodology was changed. So you have the Sunday morning church activities were included. And that's what accounts for that significant uptick in those numbers in October, November, December, maybe even September, two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
Could you just remind me that, did they add staff as well to when they added the office? Did they add staff to it? Were there two or three other employees that were added?
I believe it's one and a half. There's a part-time Yale professor who comes for the faith initiative. And that's what we call the halftime, the half person. And there was one additional staff person. The other two offices were used for the, for the arts, the performance, art person who uses the performance space there and another person in the community. So the, the net income staff was one and a half.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Amy, did you want to start?
Great, thank you. Amy Sutens for the record. Um, I just wanted to walk through two quick items that I had submitted just after the last hearing to clear up the questions that had been raised by Mr. Mahoney and Mr. Tashijin at the last hearing, which were that we had learned of the West, my clients had learned about the West Barn renovation. As I said, when they saw the dumpster, the operation center was what was discovered through the FOI request. So I had submitted that documentation. And then also the, the discussion about, and a copy of the Riordan case. I think Attorney O'Handlon might be surprised to say that I agree with him that the Riordan decision, to the extent that we it was raised, was a discussion about why we didn't bring an appeal of a lack of enforcement to you, and that was based upon the Riordan decision. This isn't a question of us not being heard, but frankly, asking that Grace Farms Foundation play by the rules. And the rules here are the zoning regulations and the terms of the special permit. And what I'd like to remind you of is one critical condition of approval, that's not a standard condition of approval in the town of New Canaan and was specifically debated during the decision on the Grace Farms special permit, which is condition six. And condition six specifically says that there shall be no material change of the approved use or intensification of any use unless specifically authorized herein. And so ultimately, there is a lot of discussion that we have all engaged in with respect to what the appropriate intensification is, what can or shouldn't be allowed. But ultimately, when you read through the letter that Attorney O'Handlon submitted, it, they certain, Grace Farms Foundation certainly admits that there are a modest number increase in the number of employees. There are relocation of employees to other space on the campus as allowed by this renovation. And I think ultimately, we all get to one clear point of agreement as both Attorney O'Handlon notes in his letter, as Attorney Gelderman advised you at the end of the last hearing. And then you also have one other person who has weighed in. There was a letter that was submitted by Attorney David Sherwood, which is in the record. He represents Tim Kurt and Donna Bissonette, who are also directly adjacent neighbors to Grace Farms Foundation. And he points out the same issue that we have raised, which is that the proposed expansion of the West Barn clearly violates condition number six of the two thousand seventeen special permit and also points out that despite all of the lengthy litigation and lengthy public hearing process to reach the special permit, no one was ever notified that the zoning permit had been issued as, as indicated by the fact that there was never a publication. So ultimately, what we, what we all agree with is this is a question for the Planning and Zoning Commission. And if you read our appeal, if you listen to what I had presented at the last function, and in fact, as I said, as Attorney O'Handlon's own letter indicates, that interpretation of, as he says in his letter, "The analysis is simple. Do the proposed interior offices in the West Barn storage area fall within the defined special permit uses of a religious institution and charitable foundation approved by P and Z for Grace Farms?" And then goes on with some additional language and then talks about whether this issue, he specifically says, "That function belongs to P and Z and not to ZBA." And as Attorney Gelderman noted at the end of the last hearing, when you were discussing the issues of interpreting condition six, as well as interpreting any of the other special permit conditions, it was that ultimately, the Planning and Zoning Commission is in the best position to analyze whether these changes were in fact consistent with the special permit. And when you go back to both the zoning permit itself and the staff report that was filed, including the sort of modestly updated version that was submitted, there's no evidence here that there was any consultation that certainly, there's no question that Grace Farms Foundation never went back to planning and zoning with respect to whether these renovations to the West Barn would be a violation of condition six. There is nothing in the staff report that references not only, it does in fact talk about the interior renovations and it talks about the fact that there was a special permit issued, but conspicuously absent if any discussion of condition six. It doesn't say that neither, there's no reference that neither Mr. Winter nor Ms. Abney were aware of the condition, that they reviewed it, how it would be interpreted, how it should be applied. If you remember, at least in the context of the operations, when Ms. Fink was the planner, she did attempt to at least reach out. But certainly, there's no indication that this was ever discussed or raised with the Planning and Zoning Commission at the time these, these, the zoning permit was was issued. And I think with respect to, um, you know, if you can think back, you know, a half an hour ago to the discussion you engaged in on that, on that fence discussion, I think this is exactly the same situation where, you know, what your staff relied upon in reaching this conclusion in issuing the zoning permit. It was signed by Mr. Winter, but certainly Lynn was involved in the, or has been involved in a lot of the back and forth with the commission with respect to Grace Farms. I would encourage you, ask them, what was the basis for their decision in issuing the permit and with respect to these questions on condition six? And the last thing I want to point out to you is that with respect to the importance of this condition to the commission, we did submit, and Lynn, if you're able to pull up the transcripts from the, it's the one that's dated. I think it's, the title of it is P and Z transcripts. There, I just want to highlight for you the discussion that P and Z commission.
Amy, there are two, there are two transcripts that you gave me. So which date do you want me to?
The one, not the two thousand eighteen, the earlier one. It's, the title page says July twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen.
Okay. Give me one second.
Sure.
You can keep talking. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, no, that's okay. And so what I wanted to highlight was the fact that, as I said, the commission in its multiple nights of discussion about the terms of the Grace Farms special permit and its, its certainly numerous conditions, did engage, you know, had a, had a draft of this that that they were reviewing and in fact, made some changes to talk about what should be, how this, how this condition should be worded. And in fact, what, what I can have Lynn direct you to is, is the back and forth between the commission members. They had an outside planning consultant as well. Ira Bloom, the town attorney, and the commission members were all involved in this discussion. So.
All right, give me one second. It's not calling.
And if you can't get it up, I can just briefly read the relevant sections if we need to.
One second.
You'll excuse me, I have to stand up. My back is killing me. No, I'm not. I can hear you.
We can still hear you too, so.
Okay.
There you go.
Great. Yeah, so if you can scroll down to the August twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen.
Know about what page it is?
It's
Cause it's like, it's like a twenty-page document.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's probably starting somewhere around page ten or something.
We're on eighteen already.
Yeah, those are the, right there. Next. Hold on, I think that was the
You didn't highlight this one.
You're on page two. Sorry, further down. The page number at the top is, it starts on the page number forty-four.
Yeah. To forty-six.
I think you're past it.
No, right here, nope. Keep going, Lynn.
Keep going, keep going.
It's twenty-nine.
There you go.
So right here at the bottom. I think it's probably easiest just to go on to the next page. So this had originally just started out as a draft. The draft was, was condition seven and then in the final draft, it, it changed. So this is, you know, where it says John Goodwin, okay, seven. They start talking about this condition, which, when you go on to the next page, talks about whether there would be, if there were changes to any of the uses that they would certainly need to come back. And at the bottom of page forty-five, they talk about the language, right where the cursor is there, Lynn? Right there. This is Glenn Chalder, who is there planning consultant and notes that it could read that that condition shall read, "There shall be no material change of use or intensification of use unless specifically authorized herein." And then Lynn, if you can scroll down, one, two, four more pages. It's the page marked twenty-four. Right at the bottom here. And there's a good discussion among the commission members that want to make it clear that that they are, they, they want to involve what they're approving. And so they actually changed the language to what is in the final condition of material change of the approved use or intensification of any use to make it clear what they were talking about. So, so Kurt, certainly, as I highlighted, this was a condition that was discussed with the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission while they were deliberating on the special permit. And I think as, as you've heard here, ultimately, what our ask is, and what we believe did not happen correctly, was that in order to issue this zoning permit, the Grace Farms Foundation should have first gone to the commission for an interpretation about whether this modification constituted a material change of the approved use or intensification of any use under the special permit. And as I said, there's nothing in the that we've seen from the commission in its minutes or in the staff report or in what Grace has presented to you to represent that that was in fact done. And so as we've noted, what our request is, is that the zoning permit that was issued be deemed invalid, our appeal sustained. And therefore, based on that, the building permit and certificate of occupancy are also invalid. And without those, there can be no valid occupation of that portion of the West Barn unless and until the Grace Farms was to return to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an interpretation of this, of this condition. So I think ultimately, all of the lawyers involved So I think ultimately, all of the lawyers involved in this process have indicated that this is ultimately a question of interpretation of the condition. It should not have been done, in our opinion, by staff, and should be an issue for the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so we would ask that you sustain the appeal, and then as I said, revoke the relevant permits and direct Grace Farms Foundation and the staff not to issue a new zoning permit until planning and zoning has weighed in on this, this renovation.
Madam Chairman.
Laura.
May I speak briefly?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, a number of things aren't addressed earlier. First of all, you all have every right, having heard the last planner who was involved in this, Keisha Fink, to talk about how she discussed this and emailed, I mean, having emailed the, the Planning and Zoning Chairman to assume that some of our communications took place. Second, the applicants have the burden here, they haven't asked Lynn a single question. They, they don't want to hear what the answer is. And I suspect that, that they're knowing the constant dialogue that goes, goes on between staff, between council, and between the commission, that this is not something that she acted on outside of what she understood about the permit and understood to be her authority. Third, the idea that somehow Conditions, that Condition Six locks down this site, this is an 80-acre site, there's at least six buildings, there is a stack between 50 and 60, the, there's 225 parking spaces, and the, there are no limitations, the use of those buildings, that Grace Farms' uses are limited to a charitable foundation and a religious institution. The idea that somehow, the scrutiny of planning and zoning is to lock everything in a single place is respectfully preposterous. And if you look at those transcripts, you'll see the word "material," and it's "material intensification," not of, not of the office administration function of a foundation, but of the use. In other words, if another church was there, that's an intensification of the religious institution use. If, as was alleged, and as I think I conceded at the hearing in the summer, if in fact another foundation was working there, that's an intensification of the use. But the idea that what is implicit in any entity's activities, in office function, in where staff works, is somehow locked down by this special permit is respectfully preposterous. And I don't think that, 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 that condition means that, the only one arguing that, everybody who reads this transcript would not support that except this council. And so I believe that, again, Ms. Brooks-Abney's decisions are within her, her discretionary authority as the zoning enforcement officer. She had every right to make that assumption, just as Fink made that decision, and, and you all held that decision with respect to the Operations Center. And third, the last thing I want to say is, respectfully, the zoning board of appeals does not operate to, you, you have the discretion to find that the exercise of, that Mrs. Brooks-Abney's decision to, on that building permit was improper. Beyond that, you don't have any authority to do anything. You don't have any authority of the building permit, you don't have any authority of what Grace Farms is doing on the property now as a result. You have the single thing was, was when Brooks-Abney looked at the building application, saw the description of the plans, understood what they were, did whatever she did to investigate it, and you haven't been offered anything by this appellant to suggest, to suggest what that was. Whether that was an abuse of her discretion under the law. And I think you've been offered ample, samples here in your own material, but they left out the word "material," they tried to insert the use, the word "any use." That's not what that transcript says, it doesn't say "any use," it says "material intensification of the use is granted." That's a religious institution, charitable foundation. Who sits where? Whose office is where in an 80-acre site, in six buildings, is not an intensification of use. But again, I think applying common sense, the plain language of what we're dealing with, you look at what Ms. Brooks-Abney did, and you find that, that interior, minor renovations in, in the buildings there that clearly have an administrative or office function because they're religious institutions or charitable foundations is legitimate.
Okay, Luke, you had something you wanted to just add?
I have, I have two, I have two questions. The first one, kind of, I had the question that Ben raised on the last appeal, and then Amy raised, and Ed just raised it now. It was my understanding that when you look at these appeals, we look at them de novo, so we're not looking into whether or not what Lynn or Keisha or anyone else did was reasonable. You know, we're looking at the de novo, we're not substituting our judgment, you know, for their judgment. So my first question is, is this a de novo review? And my second question, it's a similar, I guess, technical question, legal issue, is when we review a permit, especially something that's been obviously, as Amy introduced into record, you know, negotiated between sides, and drafted and redrafted and this and that, can, is it our job to substitute our judgment for the words of the document, or if the words of the document can be read consistently, should we limit ourselves to the four corners of the document? Meaning we should either read into words or out of words, or do we have to consider what the document says? Those are my two questions. Yes, Ed?
Ed, go ahead, did you want to speak, answer that, Ed?
Thank you, with respect to the first question, these are good questions. The fact that you have conducted a de novo review, that does not relieve the parties from the burdens of proof that the law assigns to them, given their respective conditions. So you're, the fact that it's a de novo, de novo review does not mean that you assume that the, that the action was correct, you don't operate with any assumption going into it. But it does not relieve the appellant's of their obligation to bring forward facts and legal argument, you know, that, that this was wrong. So, you know, again, getting back to that, you don't have any facts before you accept the, the permit itself and the legal argument the council has made. You don't have any facts about what inquiry was made, you don't have any facts about what conclusions were drawn, whether, you know, again, as Suits said, whether she knew the permit. I think that's an insult to this, this town officer, of course she knows the permit. We have a constant, I can tell you, in fact, we have a constant dialogue with her about the conditions of the permit. That's the nature of a special permit anywhere in town, here's the Glass House, the YMCA, or Grace Farms. But again, you don't have any facts to suggest that she made this cavalierly, or she made this ignorance of what the situation was, and for that reason, you can't conclude that would be, the fact that you do a de novo review might change that burden on the part of these appellant's to come forward with facts and law to suggest that a mistake was made. That's the first question. The second question is, I think you, you know, you look at the special permit, it's not the, it's not the transcripts that are, that inform you, it's what the special permit itself says. And, and there are no technical rules about, you know, highly technical rules about this. You all apply, you know, apply your common sense and you read the conditions as they're written there. But that's why I say, again, looking at, looking at a special permit for everything that involved a religious institution, from, 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 and a charitable foundation, from application, from the heavy office functions that are, that are implicit in one of those, the idea that somehow, that condition of the permit should be interpreted to suggest that nobody can move their desk, and that's literally what they're saying. Or that a 56-person staff, there were more, more, more employees added, actually, in the Operations Center than there were added with respect to this, found that that wasn't any violation. And you have no right to add these two together, but this is a single employee added. The idea that somehow that's an intensification of higher use as a charitable foundation is literally preposterous. And so that's why, and I think that's the answer to both of your questions.
So if I can paraphrase what you just said, so in the first step of your analysis, yes, we're limited to the terms of, of the special permit itself. And then the question becomes, if there is something that looks like a deviation from one of those terms, is it material or not? Am I correctly summarizing that?
I think, I, I think you're right, except I would say it this way, you're limited to the terms of the special permit. The transcript is not, not the special permit, special permit is what it does. And I think there is a, recognizing what that use is of a, you know, again, if this was a very narrow, you know, very narrow use in some way, that you wouldn't expect anybody to have an office function, then perhaps, you know, the office function may be different. These two uses, they necessarily incorporate a lot of activities that aren't, you know, that fall within them. And there's a lot of discretion, especially with, given the size of the, the size of the, to make those adjustments. And the idea that somehow the scrutiny of the, should, would be that, you know, that detailed and, and that nitpicking is just, you know, contrary to any notion of common sense or how these, how zoning works.
Amy, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think frankly, putting aside what Attorney O'Hanlon thinks the Planning and Zoning Commission did or didn't decide, and what it, what we think, obviously, we disagree about his, his comment about being preposterous. I think there are a couple of key facts that, both to address Luke's questions and a number of things that he said. Number one, with respect to the de novo review, you are sitting in the position of either Lynn, or more specifically, Ben Winter is the one who signed the zoning permit, so it may have been Ben that was supposed to look at all of this. And, and we've been, we've, we've been called on whether or not we have asked, I specifically asked you this evening to, that Lynn and Ben, in the absence of any information about what they looked at with respect to Condition Six in their staff report, should be asked. If, if I need to be one to do that, that is exactly what I am asking for. I believe that this, these, you members should hear from your staff as to what they looked at in evaluating Condition Six, whether they thought about its implication, and ultimately, how they reached the conclusion that this did not need to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, as is our position. Second of all, with respect to interpretation of the document, I think, you know, the, the back and forth that was, that Attorney O'Hanlon just pointed out, is that question of this could, this could never be a material, material change of the approved use or an intensification of any use, and this is still a religious and charitable institution. What he's ignoring is that there were site plans that were approved as part of the special permit, there were modifications made to those plans, the approved plans show this space as storage and trash, it has been converted into office. I hardly think that that's preposterous, that the Planning and Zoning Commission, having evaluated all the factors and thinking about what, including a language about intensification of any use, could think that the possibility that there are interior renovations that are done to this building could be an intensification of the use. Ultimately, that is the question for the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I think sitting in the shoes of your staff, whoever was that issued this zoning permit, what you are tasked with is, here's the, here's the condition, here is the situation, there are changes to the site plan that allow, not simply, as Attorney O'Hanlon has suggested, somebody moving their desk within an existing building. This was the conversion of existing unfinished space into usable office space. It's not a question, it's, they're certainly not an issue as to whether it was just for the religious institution, which is just a licensee, it's not the owner of the property, it's not the permit holder, that is Grace Farms Foundation. So to the extent that he's talking about the religious institution, frankly, it's irrelevant, and just designed to distract you and try and make you think that this somehow has to do with the operations of the church. And then finally, I think it's important for you to remember, in the context of sitting as the enforcement officer, that you are allowed to look at this, you are allowed to make that evaluation, and I don't know that there need to be any more facts beyond what we have presented. There is a change, there is a change to the site plan, there is a condition of approval, is, it's a question ultimately, as, again, as David Sherwood has noted, as Pete Gelderman has noted, as Ted O'Hanlon has noted, all of which involve the interpretation of the permit. And we believe that the zoning permit should not have been issued without a return to the commission. And if Attorney O'Hanlon thinks that, that's preposterous, then the Planning and Zoning Commission will tell me and my clients that it was preposterous. But ultimately, that's their decision, and that we don't believe it was a decision that should have been made by the staff.
John Mahoney?
Yes, Attorney Suits, I, I want to go back to the pages that you walked us through specifically, page 45 and 46, where they're talking about what was then Condition Seven, now Condition Six.
Yep.
And, and there's a part of the discussion about use, but I don't see any real conclusion of the discussion, has, is this the extent of their discussion on use?
So on 45 and 46, that was the first deliberation session. So the conclusion of that discussion from the August meeting is that section that I provided from the September meeting, that's on pages 24 to 25. And that's, that's the extent of the discussion about Condition Six specific, or what became Condition Six specifically. And then there was more, you know, obviously, there was much more debate about the other 99 conditions. And then, and just to be clear, they were working off a draft, beginning at the August meeting, they, they were working off a draft permit, so they, they were making revisions to the language. And that's, that's where the discussion on 44 and 45 takes place, and then there were obviously, like I said, refinements on 24 and 25.
And, and how many total, this is John Mahoney again, how many total employees are there on site? Or were there before this?
Before?
Before the addition of the one and a half?
Depending on Grace's own numbers, I believe, hold on. I believe the last annual report that was provided, and we had, we did put that into the record last time, I believe it's like 75, 76 or so employees as of 2018. And that was an increase from 70 the year, based on the annual report the year prior.
Luke?
Can you pull up the, the decision with the, the point six that keeps getting referenced on the screen?
I can try, but I didn't, it's, it's the original application submittal from last month, and I didn't, hold on, let me see if I have it on the computer, hold on.
This is John Mahoney again, while we're waiting for that, just to go back on this deliberation on Item Seven to be Item Six, Condition Six. So we go from the first thing where they're talking about, you know, real changes So we go from the first thing where they're talking about, you know, real changes in use from, you know, not being a church to being something else. And then all of a sudden, the next discussion is they're talking, they added the word material. Is there was nothing intervening? There was no, I mean, it doesn't seem.
No, the, the language had material. They changed it to include what was approved. So the language, if you look at page 45, the language that they're talking about in August is that Glenn Schalter suggests there shall be no material change of use or intensification of use unless specifically authorized herein. And it talks a bit about, you know, whether there's still religious, religious use and activities. And if there are things that are minor, Chairman Goodwin said material seems fair. And that's when they add the language, they make the modification to include the language of material. And then in September, when they move forward with issuing the permit, is when they add the language about approved because they, and this is where it's identified on page 24, is male commission member. I want to make it clear that we are talking about changes, material changes or intensification from the way it is now present. And they point out, Chairman Goodwin points out that it's not what's there now, it's what they're approving. And so they include the word approved in, in the language. And so that's how you wind up with the present version of condition six. Is that they add material the first, on the first draft, and then they add the word approved in the final draft.
Chairman, I'd like to speak on that. I mean, I think, this is Ted O'Handlon. I think, Mr. Mahoney, I think you're exactly right. Material applies to all. Grace Farms had only been in existence here. The site had only opened in early 2016 when it filed for this permit. So the idea that somehow everything that was, was in place was going to remain permanent is, is, it's just again, is not realistic for any company. And, and, and so the idea that, you know, you can move, you can move an employee from one building to another, you can add employees, I would, which you found the last time, employees had nothing to do with the limitation of this permit. This was not a, an office building that had a limited number of parking spaces and therefore you couldn't have too many people in there. This was, this was an 80 acre site that, you know, has the capacity for any number of, of employees and that wasn't the issue for the Planning and Zoning Commission. So again, I think the, you know, I agree that you, first of all, you don't have the whole transcript. The transcript does not incorporate into that, but the idea of material is a legal one that applies to the issue of intensification or, you know, the, you know, the idea, the law does not compare itself with trifles. That's why the, you know, the Lynn's point, this was minor, is again, planning and zoning function is not to tell people how to run their business. It is to tell people when they've got now the lane that's been given to them. And that's not what's happened here.
And I would respectfully disagree that the, the Attorney O'Handlon continues to ignore the fact that this was not simply moving desks around. There was construction and renovation of unfinished space shown on a site plan that was the basis of this special permit. It was, it's not simply, I put an extra desk in an existing office that was already identified as office. This was, I'm renovating and expanding the area used as office in this building. Whether or not that was a material change or an intensification was a question for the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is why condition six was included.
This is, I don't know what we're talking about. Material is in the condition.
Correct.
I'd like to talk to the commissioners, not the council. Again, Mr. Mahoney, the material survived whatever, I don't know what the distinction is that she's, but material is clearly the issue.
Luke, yes, Luke?
So my question is, it says there should be no material use or change or intensification of use. The material, the material, I assume also applies to intensification. They're not going to say, and this, I guess is a question for Amy, is that, I mean, I think the material applies to both of them, right? So then the question becomes then during our de novo review, is whether or not this change is material, material intensification or material change of use. So I guess then, assuming an appellate gets passed standing, then the question, we're limited to terms of the document, if it can be read consistently, we'd be doing that here. So then the next question, so then the question we have to answer is whether or not this is material. Your position is, is that planning and zoning is best suited to determine what's material to planning and zoning, not the, not the staff in the planning and zoning office.
That's correct.
That's like, I'm just trying to summarize this.
That, that, at the end of the day, our position is this zoning permit could not be issued without a return to the Planning and Zoning Commission to make a determination as to whether it was one, whether it was one consistent with condition six, and if there was some other condition or issue that the Planning and Zoning Commission thought was relevant, maybe it had to do with parking, whatever. I don't know what else they might, members might think of, but certainly with respect to condition six, this was a determination that needed to be made by the commission before a zoning permit could be issued. And that is why we're looking for a revocation of the zoning permit. I understand we have a legal disagreement about anything beyond that. I think you are entitled, based on the zoning permit, to revoke the building permit and CO. I understand that your counsel and Attorney O'Handlon disagree, but that's, ultimately, that's, that's the ask.
I'm not at the stage yet, Luke Tash speaking, at the stage yet where I'm looking at the relief, I'm looking at, I guess, the underlying question. And I want to review all the materials before I reach any sort of decision on this. But there must be some types of decisions, because they put the qualifier material in there, that are so minor in nature that P and Z doesn't have to go back to it. Doesn't say, there can't be any changes at all or intensifications. It says material. So.
I guess it's.
I think the distinction is, is what changes not material and it's wrong. And what change is material and what isn't. And I don't know how, how we stepped, because again, we're hearing this de novo, how I substitute my judgment in that situation and determine, you know, what, I'm not saying substitute because I don't think I substituted for Lynn, but how.
You're standing in her shoes.
Yeah, I don't understand how I stand in her shoes and make the decision of what's material and what's not. It just seems very open to me unless you're pointing to the transcripts and other things to show what's material.
But that question is, is the very nature of what we're raising. You can't stand in her shoes and make that determination. I don't think Lynn or Ben can make that determination. As standing in the shoes of the zoning staff, the question is, oh, here's condition six, here's a zoning permit that changes this approved site plan, this needs to make, this needs to be raised with the commission. And the commission, that, that you need the direction from the commission before you can issue a zoning permit.
So it's, Luke Tash, so it's, let me finish. So it's your position then, on behalf of the appellate, that any change requires, any change from what's submitted requires P and Z to decide because the zoning enforced, the planning and zoning officers cannot determine if it's material or not.
With, if there is a change to the approved plans, so right, so as I said, the site plans that were approved as part of this showed this space, just like the operations center, as unfinished space. There is a change to the approved site plan that, that unquestionably needs to go back to the commission to make that determination under the way, language of condition six and the special permit in its entirety. If there was, you know, I'm trying to think off the top of my head, if, if as Attorney O'Handlon said, they put an additional desk or they changed a, you know, additional desk into an existing office that had one, one desk and they put two desks in there? No, because there's no change to the existing site plan that was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission as part of this special permit.
Can I make one thing?
No, Jessica, the board member wants to speak. Go ahead, Jessica, she had her hand up.
Yeah, I, I would like to know if either council, this is Jessica Carden for the record, if either council has any legal case authority that would point to the interpretation or at least the argument that Attorney Sutens is trying to raise, which essentially would substitute planning and zoning as a commission for the role of the town planner for the entire review of this special permit.
I'd like to answer that first. That's a good question. That was what I was going to get to.
Ted, what's your name?
This is Ted O'Handlon. Thank you. I think you, you need to hear from your counsel at this point because that's not how zoning works and you're, you're exactly right to answer that question. And there's a lot of things that here that are not accurate. This West Barn is a classroom building. There are two large classrooms, one that can be expanded into a performance thing. It is as close, it is as close as you can get to an office. Instructors have, instructors stay in there, people come there, that's where lectures are, that's where papers are handed out. And it's also, what's also done there is there's partial sales of goods that Grace Farms can sell. So the idea that we're changing the use is not accurate. Second of all, Ms. Sutens said something significant there. If there's a change in the site, there was no change in the site plan. Site plan is a very technical thing that these are planning and zoning approve. It's where the buildings are, how they're configured, where the parking is, how it's configured. There was no change to this. That's why it's important that she said that it was noted that there was no change in the footprint of the building. This renovation, this conversion of some storage space to offices did not result in any change of the site plan. That's one of the, one of the factors that is, that is used in determining whether it's minor or not. And the whole purpose of Ms. Brooks, Abney and Ben, their purpose there is facilitate the conduct, the conduct of business by the zoning department. The idea that every one of these questions has to come back to the zoning commission is, is just not how it operates. It could not operate if it got that hyper technical. So thank you for asking that. But, but again, Ms. Sutens said that a minute ago. If there was a change in the site plan, I would agree. Then you have to go back and get permission. If there's no change in the site, that is probably the single significant where staff can say, can take the turn, whether it's material or non-material.
Ben?
I'd like to bring everybody's attention to 8.5A enforcement authority. The commission shall appoint an administrative agent with the title of zoning inspector with full power to administer and enforce these regulations on behalf of the commission. I don't think there's an issue here. This is the staff that is empowered to interpret whether what an applicant wants to do is consistent with the permit they are operating under. They, they decided that it is, and I for one find nothing at fault with it. I would also, if that question were ab initio brought to me to decide whether or not there was something wrong with it and in violation of this permit, I would say it's neither a material change nor a material intensification of use. And I would be done. And I think that's where this case is. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
Well, that stymied everyone.
I, I think the one thing I would, Amy Sutens for the record, that to Ms. Carden's question, there was a case, a case actually out of New Canaan a number of years ago involving a veterinary clinic where the, the former town planner did go to the, my recollection was to the commission for interpretation about whether a particular use was allowed. I don't, and then second of all, I don't have the regulations in front of me, but my recollection was that the commission also retains enforcement power under the zoning regulations as well. It appoints, it appoints an official, but I believe they, they retain authority as well.
I would agree with that. There's no question about that. But in, you know, as, as Mr. Bielis said, the commission has not acted and has not chosen to act. And the staff has, has not acted and not chose to act, except to find that this was minor and not material.
So do we, do we discuss and come to a conclusion? Does the board feel like they have enough material to take this to the next level, to vote on it? What does the board think?
As, as I said before, Luke Tash speaking, I don't, I may have enough material, but I don't know if procedurally we can, but I'd like to not go into executive sessions and ask additional questions if we need them. But I'd like to continue this so that we can have additional time to review the materials that have been submitted.
What, how does the rest of the board, what does the rest of the board think? John?
This is John Mahoney for the record. I would agree with Luke. I'd like additional time to review the materials. I don't know that we need to stop things now for tonight, although it's getting late. But I'm not prepared to, I, I would prefer not to go into executive session right now.
Okay. Lynn, could we carry it on or what is our obligation?
I believe Amy would have to grant us an extension to keep it open.
You have a 90 day executive order extension.
You are correct. Sorry, I forgot about that one.
Right.
So we, we should be fine then.
Right, I, I believe at this point, we've provided all of the information that we have, and I think we've answered as many of the questions. We do think you could close the hearing tonight, understanding that you may not vote tonight and need to deliberate. So that would be, that would be our position, that we think you have everything you need to, to close. And if you need to wait till next month to vote, then so be it.
Question for, this is John Mahoney, question for the board's counsel. If we were to go into executive session, are you still available to us during our deliberations or are you cut off as well?
I can respond to legal questions, but that's it. If you have a legal question, I can respond to that. Beyond that, no, I can't really add anything.
Thank you.
By the way, the public hasn't spoken yet, so before you close your hearing.
Okay. Okay, did we, I guess, so let's hear from the people who are here to, Lynn, are there names there that you wanted to call?
I'm going to go one by one and unmute each one and ask them if they want to speak.
Okay.
Kay Blackdon, do you have anything, do you want to speak from the public?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Jennifer Holm, do you want to speak?
No, we're fine, thank you. And thank you for taking the time to do this.
Michael Chen, do you want to speak?
Michael?
Michael, do you want to speak? He's not answering. Rod, do you want to speak?
I think you have him on mute.
Well, I unmuted him.
Still showing.
Dylan, thank you so much.
Okay. Michael, one more chance, do you want to speak?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's everyone that just leaves, well, it's us. David, you speak? So that just leaves Cynthia.
I see a Diane Neves.
Diane, she is the other attorney for.
Okay.
She's my colleague.
Okay.
Diana, do you want to speak?
No, Ted, Ted said it.
Yeah. That's everyone. And that just leaves Cynthia, who's on the board.
Yes, Cynthia is on the board, but hasn't been sworn in yet, so she is observing.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, thank you, members of the ZBA.
Okay, thank you. So does the board feel as though they want to just go into more of a business session, but just keep it open until the next, our next meeting?
I'd rather not go into business session, Luke Tash is saying, as I said before, we have the 90 days, I'd rather leave it open for the 90 days in case we have additional questions. Once we go into business session, we can't ask any additional questions. I don't have any questions in mind, but I don't see an advantage to go into business session, because we have another 90 days.
Okay. All right, so we, we will continue this matter until the next, our next meeting, which is June?
June 1st.
June 1st.
June 1st.
Ben?
Will that session be simply to go into business meeting mode and have a vote? I personally would prefer no further submissions. And if that's, if that's what we're looking, I'd rather we voted tonight, or go into business meeting tonight.
Well, that leaves us, I think the materials want to be reviewed by the board members-
I have no objection to that, and everybody should, if they, and we can take as much time as you want within the 90 days. But I just think we ought to know that we're coming back for a business meeting, not to hear again from the attorneys.
Well, I think that in case there are questions, that people come up with questions after reviewing the material.
Also, I just don't want more submittals and more presentations and more advocacy.
Well, I think that's, they're right if they want to do that, but-
Dually coded.
What's that?
They have like-
Dually coded.
Well, I think we should leave it open in case there are questions that come up after review, does that make sense?
Okay.
Okay. So do we have to, do we have to vote on that, Lynn, to continue it?
No.
No. Okay, so the, the matter is continued into our next session.
First. Thank you very much.
June 1st.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Night off.
We have to do our minutes.
Minutes, minutes.
Oh.
They're all good.
Yeah.
No edits this time?
Ben, you've reviewed them and you're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
No semicolons that were a colon, or?
No, no. I do have one note for Lynn on her memorandum.
Yeah.
She's going to hate me.
That's okay, you can criticize.
She already does.
In, it's on the appeal, the Marquitos Homes appeal.
Yes.
The description says the ZBA can quite literally step into the shoes of the zoning enforcement officer. I don't think my feet would fit into the zoning officer's shoes, so I wouldn't say literally, I would say figuratively, any of it, that's what-
I'll make a, I'll make a note of that.
Thank you.
I knew there was an edit somewhere.
That's a good point, Ben.
Thank you very much.
He just can't help himself, Lynn.
That's a funny one, though.
Okay, anything else on the minutes? Okay, the meeting is adjourned?
Don't, wait, don't-
Approved, that's right.
I move the minutes be approved as submitted.
Second.
Everyone in favor?
Who is the second? I missed it.
Ben? All those in favor?
You need to take a roll call vote, Laura.
For what, for?
Because we're on a June, you need to do a roll-
Tash in favor.
Walsh in favor.
Carden in favor.
Edmonds in favor.
Way to go.
Okay.
We're good?
We are good, we're going to adjourn at 10:44 PM.
Okay, we are, the meeting is adjourned, thank you so much.
Thank you, Peter.
Good night, everybody.
Stay well.
Everybody stay well.